Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June 16 Town Council Meeting. We have a busy agenda tonight, so we're going to move right into it, and I will begin tonight by asking the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Vance.
Here.
Thank you. Next, I will call on Mayor Pro Tim Kathy Behringer, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also will present our invocation.
Stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Father God, we come humbly before you this evening, grateful for your grace and mercy, and we ask for your wisdom as we address the business of the town of Garner and ask you to help us make the best decisions possible. We ask for your protection for frontline workers around the world to keep them safe and for our servicemen as well. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Garner. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much, Ms. Behringer. I'm going to kind of leave my face mask down. It's a little easier, I think, to understand me, but I'll keep it close by. So, the next item of business is under the heading of petitions and comments. This is a portion of the meeting to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. The board is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments section, segment, excuse me. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Ms. Gibson, did we have any persons to sign up tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, notwithstanding that, if you're here this evening and you had a desire to make a petition or comment, now would be the time just to raise your hand, and I'll be happy to recognize you and will ask you to come to the podium. Are there any persons? Okay, seeing and hearing none, council, I will ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
They'll move. Second.
Okay, been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And it's so ordered. Okay, as you can see, the next item of business is presentations. One of the more pleasant duties that the mayor has, I think, is the opportunity, as I do this evening, to read a proclamation. Sometimes these proclamations are about different items, but tonight it's about a very special person, and I suspect probably most everybody in this room tonight is aware of the name of Helen Sturdivan Phillips. So, I'm going to take a minute to read a proclamation prepared specifically in her honor, then I believe there will be a video presentation, and then we will ask family members who are here to come forward, and I will issue to them the proclamation. So, listen with me if you will. Helen Sturdivan Phillips moved to Garner in 1948, and during that time was known throughout the Garner community as an ambassador for social equality, the voice of the underserved, and was affectionately known as the mayor of New Ran Road. That's something I didn't know until we got to this here, so, and she let me know about that when I'd go visit with her, I think. And whereas Helen was a wife and mother of eight who worked as a housekeeper in the Raleigh Public School System and at NC State University, and whereas Helen proudly raised her children in Garner and stressed the importance of education and participation in the political process, and whereas Helen was recognized by the Garner community as a recipient of the James R. Stevens Award winner in 2001, the first African-American woman to do so for her substantial contributions to the town, and she was later featured on Mayor Ronnie Williams' show Great People in Garner in 2015. I believe that's been playing on that channel over the course of the last few nights, right?
A few days, that's right, yeah.
Yes.
I watched it the other night.
And whereas Ms. Helen volunteered on the MLK Committee to recognize individuals that exemplified the ideals of Martin Luther King Jr., such as racial equality, righteousness, and service to your neighbor, much of the same attributes that she possessed, and whereas Ms. Helen served on the Garner Concerned Citizens United to promote fairness and social justice for all, she had a keen awareness of what was going on around her and was highly respected by the people of all races as she sought to maintain good race relations. And whereas Helen was an ambassador for New Ran Road and attended town council meetings to advocate for resurfacing sidewalks, aesthetic improvements and development concerns relating to the character of the community, now therefore I Ken Marshburn, Mayor of the town of Garner, do hereby proclaim June 16, 2020, as Helen Sturdivan Phillips' Day. Further, the mayor and town council do hereby recognize her service to the Garner community at large and honor her life as a faithful servant to God and her neighbors. And this contains the town seal and the mayor's signature, so I think right after the video, we will ask the family to come forward, and we will present that. Thank you.
You have long been known, even as I was growing up in Garner, I knew who Helen Phillips was because you made yourself become a community activist. Why?
I didn't know I was a community act.
That's what they told me. I kept hearing your name. You remember this discussion we had about the sidewalks?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know what? I was, you know, I realized I had made a mistake by not going on to school, getting an education, so I said, "I got to do the next best thing." My mama said, "If you're going to be a floor sweeper, sweep it good." And after I saw what was happening to Martin Luther King, and he died and got beat up so we could go and vote, so I said to myself, "No matter what, I'm going to speak out for my people regardless. Whatever I think we need in this area, I'm going to the proper people and make myself known and let them know how I..."
And that included sidewalks, tell us stories.
And cruised the sidewalks. And you know, mayor, there was, when we moved up here, there was some deep ditches on this side of the road. It was so deep, that's where I go and got a lot of whooping, going to a store down there when the store was open, walking in them deep ditches. And I brought it to the town's attention, but they said it was a state-supported road. Somebody gave me the address, I mean, telephoned them, and I called them and told them, I said, "It's a wonder somebody don't have a record and run off in those deep ditches." And they came and filled them.
We could watch it all night, but...
There was more to that interview. I think I did it right.
If you want to go right there, you can do it. Uh-uh, I can do it. I'm going to show you I can do it. Because I get little when I try to squeeze in something. I'm like my mom.
I know who you all are, so I'm going to ask you if you will, just to yourself, if you want to say it or not, that's fine, but...
(laughter)
Boy, you're a little slow.
I really can't answer.
My great privilege to present this.
(applause)
Hi, Gord. Let's see, brother. All right, how you doing? All right, man, you take care, Gord.
Any town managers feel free.
Okay. I just want to say that, you know, Helen exemplified doing it the right way. Helen didn't back down, she didn't stop, she didn't appear to be mad, but she did it the right way, and she got so very much done. She's just an amazing legacy and an example for all of us to follow. If more people proceeded on their mission the way Helen did, what a much better world it would be. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say to the family that I called her Mother Phillips because she adopted me into the family. I'll never forget the first time I had the opportunity to meet her. It was, she was asking me to do something, and she, and I was reluctant, but she did not quit until I did it. That was just a sign of her persistence, and I really appreciate her, and what she did within the community will never be forgotten, and I just tell the family to continue on with their legacy, continue on to move forward, and to continue on to advocate for the things that are for the community. Your mother is gone physically, but she's still here spiritually, and she will not be forgotten.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I'd like to say one thing about Ms. Phillips, I always admired, is you knew where she stood. She was not wishy-washy. If she was, if she supported something or wanted something, she'd let you know it, not in ugly ways, she was just pretty firm about it. Seeing her talk with Mayor Williams about the sidewalks at and repaving New Ran Road. Boy, she burned up the phone lines quite a few times talking about that, and if I didn't call her back in what she thought was an appropriate period of time, she would call back again and say, and leave a message and say, "I just wanted to make sure you heard the first message, so you'd call me back." And so, I would. That was the hint that I needed to call her pretty quick. But Ms. Phillips did a lot. I always enjoyed hearing Ms. Phillips talk about her past and growing up and the struggles they had and how Garner was small, I always thought was fascinating because she had so much of that in her mind, and she could remember things and tell you things that happened 40, 50, 60 years ago, just like that, which was amazing. And that's what I always admired, that recall of, and saw the changes that she saw. So, I'm glad she got to see the sidewalks and get New Ran Road paved and get the ditches all taken care of in a way that they still could be better. But anyway, she pushed for a lot and got a lot, and her spirit, like you said, like Mr. Vance said, will always be in the New Ran Road area, the mayor of New Ran Road.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, when I ran, back then, I was alderman back in those days, aging myself out here, and I was talking to Ronnie, he wanted mayor back then, but he was on alderman. It was downtown, it's an event going on on Saturday, and we were down there, and he said, "Phil, that lady coming right there, you need to meet." I said, "Well, who is that lady?" He said, "That's Helen Phillips." He said, "And you need to introduce yourself to her, and so she knows who you are, and she probably has some questions for you." So, I said, "Well, I'm on it." So, hey, did a little ride of it, and it's Ms. Phillips? "I'm Phil Matthews, and I'm running for Garner Alderman." She said, "Phil Matthews?" I said, "Yes, ma'am, Phil Matthews." She said, "Well, why are you running?" So, I told her, and I said, "I've heard a lot about you, and I would appreciate your support." So, from that day on, she always called me Phil Matthews. It was never Phil or Matthews, it was always, "Phil Matthews, come here. Let me tell you something, Phil Matthews. We need some sidewalks over here, Phil Matthews." It was Phil Matthews, and I can hear it to this very day, and she was a real special lady, and it was great that the family and the daughter got involved, got a brand-new house over there, that was a beautiful home, and got to know her husband, very fine gentleman, and so, a great family, and y'all got a lot to be proud of, and glad I got to meet who got to whooping tonight, so that's quite interesting. So, congratulations, she'll be long remembered, I promise you.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd just say to the family that it's a name I knew but not someone I got the opportunity to know, and since her passing, I've read more and watched videos, and even a little bit was shown there, reminded me of my own grandmother, and the need to continue that legacy and that work. And so, I just want to say I wish I'd had the opportunity to get to know her better.
Okay, thank you, council, and then now our town manager has some comments.
Yeah, I believe Ms. Phillips was one of the first community members I met when I got here in 2001. You know, at that time, she used to come out to the town council meetings, and she would speak, petitions and comments, she was going to speak, and she would call me from time to time, and she'd say, "Mr. Dickerson." And, you know, regardless of the age or whatever, she was always respectful of me, and of course, I was respectful of her, and she would come out to the council meetings and advocate for New Ran Road to be resurfaced and repaved, and she'd say, "That road hasn't been paved since I've been here for 50 years." I know how long she lived on that street. And she said, and I remember her saying, "If y'all pave New Ran Road, I won't ask for anything else." And so, the road got repaved, and then she came to the next meeting and said, "We need sidewalks, I need somewhere to walk." So, I said, "Ms. Phillips, you said when we paved the road, you weren't going to ask for anything else." She says, "Well, after y'all give me some sidewalks, I won't ask for anything else." So, but she was always pleasant, always respectful. I've been in her home and had conversations with her and the rest of the community about different things around the New Ran Road area. So, she cared about New Ran Road, she cared about people, she cared about black people, she cared about white people. If you look at the video, she talks about some of her friends, all races, and she's just a true example of what we all need to be, caring about each other and everybody, regardless of differences. So, I just thank y'all for being here tonight, and just God bless her. Thank you.
Okay, and families, stick around as long as you want. You also have our permission to leave since you were here for this special occasion, so it's a pleasure to see you all again and to see a couple of you that I did not have the occasion to meet before, but you can go forth with pride of the great lives that she lived and the legacy she left to all of you, so go out there and follow her example, okay? Sure, sure, okay. All right, council, the next item of business is the consent agenda. You have it before you, unless anyone desires to pull an agenda item for other discussion or for any other reason, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question, but we can have the motion in a second, but I have one quick question about one of the items. I don't want to...
Okay, all right, all right. Well, let's get a motion on the... So moved. Okay, so moved by Mr. Vance, seconded by Councilmember Behringer, and Mr., yeah, questions or comments? Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, one question on the budget amendment, the fiscal year closeout.
Okay.
Yes, I'll answer it, or either David, David will come in and answer it, depending on what the question is.
There's just one line item, the dental claims that seem to have had a revenue change of $100,000, and I was curious as to what that was and if that's a recurring change in the budget or if it was a one-off.
David, can you speak to the dental claims and the difference, or BD, is that...
The dental claim, a line item of, is $100,000 of the $160,000, so I was just curious if that was a one-off or if that was a new recurring expense.
No, it's, we're self-funded for dental, so at year-end, we have to record the expense for the year, and for whatever reason, it's typically not a budgeted item because I guess it fluctuates so much, so it's just projecting what we think it'll be at year-end.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, without question, any other questions? Otherwise, are you ready to vote? All in favor of approving consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And there is no opposition, so it passes unanimously. Thank you, thank you all. Okay, our next item of business is item H, I believe. Am I keeping up here? Let me see here, yes. We have two public hearings. The first one is SUP, SP 1919, Oak City Academy, and so Ms. Jones is presenting on that. Let's see, I should read some instructions here. And by the way, those of you who need to be sworn in for this hearing, you could come around to the clerk. Where is the clerk? Did she leave? She would, I'm sure she'll be right back in, but we'll let you get sworn in. There are rules governing these hearings required by law that we must follow. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means it is more formal than other public hearings. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing, and so I'm now going to inquire of the council whether any member has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or if you've had any ex parte communications or any close familial, business, or other association or relationship with the affected person, or a financial interest in the outcome. I'll pause at this point and ask if any council members are affected in such a way or have any. Okay, none? This is a fact-finding hearing, and appropriate sworn evidence must be presented as the basis for whatever decisions the town council makes. Opinion testimony is not appropriate factual evidence unless the witness is a recognized expert on the subject. Therefore, opinion testimony concerning such things as impacts on land values, traffic safety, or noise levels should be avoided unless the witness is a recognized expert based on training and experience. You're permitted to ask questions of other speakers concerning their factual testimony. Council members, however, are only allowed to receive factual information about the cases in this hearing and are not allowed to discuss cases outside of this hearing. And for those of you speaking, we would ask that you respect time limits and other requests to minimize repetitive testimony. And with that, I'm going to open the public hearing, and let's see, Ms. Clerk, do we need to swear in witnesses at this point? Okay, so if you will, those of you who expect to testify, would you please go back to the clerk's desk and be sworn in by Ms. Gibson? While we're waiting for that, Mr. Town Manager, I think it's fairly obvious, but I was going to ask, do we, we don't have any members of the public who are waiting upstairs, we were able to get everybody in this room tonight, is that right?
I'm not sure if anybody went. Are there still some? Okay, because we kind of asked them as they were coming in, too.
Okay, so she does want to speak, is that right?
No, for the next round.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
The folks up there for the next hearing.
Okay, but any person who wants to speak at this hearing that might be up there?
No, they're up here.
They're here, okay, thank you, thank you. That's what I needed to confirm. Okay, all right, as soon as we get Ms. Jones sworn in, we will hear from her. And one other prompting while we're waiting, since I heard my cellphone ring, I'll ask everybody here, if you don't mind, to silence your cellphones. I came in from out of town, and that's my only excuse that I didn't have mine on vibrate, so please silence some if you will. Okay, thank you, Ms. Gibson. Everybody's been sworn in, I believe it needs to be, so we will hear from planning person two, Ms. Jones. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here to present Oak City Academy Special Use Permit, SUP, SP 1919. The applicant is River and Associates. The parcel owners are TEDS and Company and Joseph and Natalie Mitchell. It's located at 1057 Benson Road, and the tract size is approximately 4.74 acres. The planning commission heard this project on May 18th, and it's before you tonight. As I mentioned, the tract size is 4.74 acres, proposed use is a private school totaling 24,620 square feet with five buildings. The minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, and the setbacks for this property, excuse me, for this use is 40 feet from all exterior property lines. Here's the overall pitch of the site, the orangish-pinkish colors of the buildings, and the blue part is the stormwater area. The building will be constructed, the buildings will be constructed of fiber cement siding and fiber cement panel cladding. No open space was required for this project as this is a commercial development. Landscaping buffer requirements, tree coverage is being met by the 12% replacement of vegetation, the perimeter buffers, the 15-foot perimeter buffer for the eastern and northern buffers of the project, the 35-foot perimeter buffer adjacent to the single-family homes and to the south of the project. The street buffers, 15-foot wide along Benson Road and Pool Drive Extension, and the street trees are being provided 40 feet on average along Benson Road and Pool Drive Extension. Lighting for this site has been shown in conformance with the UDO, as well as meeting staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and warm white lighting, excuse me, warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 K. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminary approved this plan. Parking is based on two spaces per classroom or office for elementary school. They're required to have four two-spaces and four ADA accessible. They're providing 63 and four accessible. Environment floodplain, this site does contain FEMA designated floodplain areas, however... Okay, thank you, Ms. Gibson, everybody's been sworn in, I believe it needs to be, so we will hear from planning person two, Ms. Jones, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here to present Oak City Academy Special Use Permit, SUP SP 1919. The applicant is River and Associates, the parcel owners are T E D S and Company and Joseph and Natalie Mitchell. It's located at 1057 Benson Road, and the tract size is approximately 4.74 acres. The planning commission heard this project on May 18th, and it's before you tonight. As I mentioned, the tract size is 4.74 acres, proposed use is a private school totaling 24,620 square feet with five buildings, the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, and the setbacks for this property, excuse me, for this use is 40 feet from all exterior property lines. Here's the overall pitch of the site, the orangish, pinkish colors of the buildings, the blue part is the stormwater area. The building will be constructed, the buildings will be constructed of fiber cement siding and fiber cement panel cladding. No open space was required for this project as this is a commercial development. Landscaping buffer requirements, tree coverage is being met by the 12% replacement of vegetation, the perimeter buffers, the 15-foot perimeter buffer for the eastern and northern buffers of the project, the 35-foot perimeter buffer adjacent to the single-family homes and to the south of the project. The street buffers, 15-foot wide along Benson Road and Pool Drive Extension, and the street trees are being provided 40 feet on average along Benson Road and Pool Drive Extension. Lighting for this site has been shown in conformance with the UDO, as well as meeting staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and warm white lighting, excuse me, warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 K. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminary approved this plan. Parking is based on two spaces per classroom or office for elementary school. They're required to have four two-spaces and four ADA accessible, they're providing 63 and four accessible. Environment floodplain, this site does contain FEMA designated floodplain areas, however, there will be no development within those areas or any other environmentally sensitive area. Stormwater management, Oak City Academy is a school development site that is located within the water set protection area. This site is subject to stormwater water quality requirements for nitrogen and 85% TSS removal, as well as their water quantity requirements for 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. This development plan proposes a stormwater wetland to treat impervious surface for nitrogen, 85% TSS removal, and all water quantity requirements to ensure stormwater requirements are met as a part of this development. A nitrogen offset payment will be required as a part of this redevelopment. Water and sewer will be provided by the City of Raleigh, then they're going to connect to the system from existing infrastructure. There will be curved gutter and sidewalks along the southern side of the access drive, which later will become a part of the extension of Pool Drive to Benson Road. And the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan recommends Benson Road as a two-lane divided thoroughfare and extends to Pool Drive, a two-lane minor collective street to Benson Road and sidewalks along Benson Road. More information about the transportation, the general statute 168-307.1 places limitations on the city's requirements for street improvements related to schools and stipulates that this costs required to, cost of required improvements through the state highway system provided by a school shall be reimbursed by DOT. City requirements that go beyond DOT requirement shall be reimbursed by the city. As such, the town will construct the ultimate section for Benson Road and sidewalks along applicant's site furniture at a later date. Sufficient right-of-way is available along this portion of Benson Road to complete the ultimate two-lane divided section, so the applicant has not been required to dedicate any right-of-way. The applicant will construct a driveway on Benson Road, future Pool Drive Extension, with a 60-foot public right-of-way dedication. These plans may be considered consistent with the recommendation of the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greensway Master Plan revealed no planned recommendation in this project area, therefore, this project as proposed may be considered consistent with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greensways Master Plan. At a sufficient review and plan revision, staff finds that this project as now proposed may be considered consistent with the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance so long as the following specific conditions are met. Prior to final plat approval, payment of engineering inspection fees shall be paid to the town of Garner. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, a minor subdivision plat shall be approved and recorded with Wake County Register of Deeds. Prior to issuance of a building permit, payment of public utility fees shall be paid to the City of Raleigh. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, a nitrogen offset payment is required. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the stormwater control measures maintenance plan and associated memorandum of agreement shall be approved and recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. Approval of construction drawings by the engineering department is required for this site. Detailed design of the, excuse me, of the future public street section along with associated drainage infrastructure will be required during this review. The City of Raleigh, the construction approval will be required, plans to prepare by the NCPA for any extensions of public water or public private sewer mains, and finally, from the City of Raleigh, a plat recommendation required for construction approval prior to the building permit. The planning commission reviewed this request at their May 18, 2020, meeting. With unanimous vote, the planning commission confirmed staff's findings in Section 5 that SUP SP 1919 Oak City is in conformity with the adopted town's plans and policies. Please refer to page 42 in your packet. I'm sorry, moving too fast. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, at this point, before we hear from the applicant, we'll take around with the council, Mr. Singleton, don't start with you, no, okay, Mr. Matthews, okay, Ms. Behringer, Mr. Dellinger.
Quick question, I think before we had requested that lists of all the neighborhood notices that went out, all the addresses would be included in our packet, in our agenda, so we would have a list, and I don't see that for either of the two that are here tonight. I always get concerned when no one shows up.
Well, they did have a meeting for this project, and no one did show up.
Right, and that's why I say, I would be concerned if I'm a developer and I sent out notices and nobody showed up, just because, kind of want to have that outreach, but I just want to make sure that in the future we have those lists of addresses that those notices are mailed out to, so that we can check and verify.
Not just the ones that show up, you want the whole list.
You want the 300-foot radius of the addresses that.
Yeah, because that's the only way that I can sit up here and check to make sure that the guidelines are being followed and that that radius was, was met. Yeah, so that's just, I like to do my, my double check, and that's all. The other thing is, I guess we'll get to this with the site plan, because some of the layout's very unclear, but the zoning is fine, so that's all I have.
Okay.
There's no, there's no other zoning, it's just a site plan.
Oh, this is just for the site plan?
Yes, there's no re-zoning associated with this project.
Okay, well, I'm not clear by any of the graphics that were presented, what the driveway looks like in relation to Benson Road and the road that's across it with Kentucky, is that, what the name of that?
Kentucky Drive.
Nothing in the site plans that we had show, is it directly across or is it not directly across?
It's, it's kind of like that, isn't it? It's like here, then Kentucky's like that.
Heard you say is it catty-cornered?
Is there going to?
I'm sure that's right, term.
The access drive is directly across the street from Kentucky.
So it's not going to be a perfect X where Kentucky is, it's going to be offset. It's lined up?
I think it's directly across the street, the access.
I guess my question, why don't we have a graphic that shows the site plan and how that driveway connects to Benson Road and the road across the road, across Benson Road?
Because this right here is just showing you the overall of the actual site, not so much the, I understand what you're saying, but I'm answering your question, this was just for the site plan, for the site itself.
Is, the driveway improvements are part of the site plan, right?
Correct, but they're also, the engineering department will, they have to submit those detailed drawings to engineering department as a part of the condition of approval, so those aren't, that information is not a part of this site plan review.
Okay.
I'm, I'm kind of confused.
No questions, no questions at the moment.
Okay.
I didn't hear the question.
I'm, I'm just a little confused at what we're trying, are we approving the zoning change or the site plan?
There's no zoning associated with this project.
No zoning change on this one, strictly a site plan.
That's, then my question still stands, why on the site plan we have, is that driveway, are we seeing, we can't see where it lines up with the rest of the road, Benson Road, and then the adjoining road across? I mean, if we're approving the site plan, I want to see the whole site, am I seeing the whole site in this?
Um, I understand what you're saying, I totally, I'm not.
He's seen the buildable area, but he wants to see how the driveways line up with existing streets and other roads and driveways, so something broader, do we have a broader?
Does that sort of happen on page 38 with a depiction there where it shows Kentucky across Benson Road there, I don't know if that helps Mr. Dellinger or not, but.
But it doesn't show the alignment of the driveway relative to Kentucky on the other side of Benson.
Yeah.
So my question is, do we have a diagram that, they said it does, I trust them, but I'd like to see a diagram that shows that that driveway goes directly across to Kentucky.
Well, relating to a state highway, so DOT has final say, we don't, right?
If you.
We can look at it, but it's a state highway, and they had the final say, and us, they had the say with the alignment and everything else, not us, and whatever they approve is.
If you look at this.
This gentleman, I believe, might have something worse.
I say up here, you can see that little, that little piece of strip of land, that's the extension, so to speak, Pool Drive Extension.
Yeah, the one up to the north there, it's just a slight offset.
It's not really an extension of the road, so lining up is probably not a requirement.
But my question is, does that ultimately cause traffic issues turning right and left across traffic with cars coming, you have an intersection that's not crossed like this, it's offset, that sounds like a dangerous intersection when you have cars that aren't directly crossing each other, trying to turn left and right into traffic, and then if you ever want to put a light there, for whatever reason, in the future, the roads aren't lined up.
Now, I can't speak on the traffic and the safety of that because I'm not a traffic engineer.
I mean, I just think that.
Well, to Mr. Singleton's point, state maintain.
Can I ask this, ask a question? This is Chris Jumper.
Yeah, okay, the town engineer, can we get him on the screen? There he is.
Hey, sorry, yes, the Pool Drive is aligned directly with Kentucky Drive.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Excuse me.
Chris should be sworn.
Okay, Chris, as a technical matter, since you're testifying, you, you should have been sworn, didn't know that was going to happen, should we just hold this testimony at this point, Mr. Baggett?
No, you can swear him right there.
Okay.
Ms. Gibson can do it.
Chris, can you hear me?
Hearing.
Okay.
Sorry, I cannot.
Don't come to the podium if you don't mind, Ms. Gibson.
Is that it, okay, all right. Microphone, I can hear you that way.
Chris?
You got to yell, Stella, you got to get loud.
I know, Chris, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you swear that the testimony you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baggett.
The Pool Drive Extension is lining up directly with Kentucky Drive, and we will be reviewing that in more detail during the construction drawing review stage, which is typically handled after site plan approval or public infrastructure improvements, so we will make sure that all site distance and lineage is set up appropriately, and it will also go through both the town and DOT review and approval.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you satisfied, Mr. Dellinger? Anybody else? Okay. If no other questions for Ms. Jones, let's see, we're going to hear from whom with the applicant now. Anybody wish to testify? If you will, please, sir, just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir, my name is Danny Breed, 5029 Glyn Creek Trail, Garner, North Carolina, 27529. I'm the headmaster for Oak City Academy, it's a pleasure to see a lot of y'all again, and so two years ago, y'all helped us get in here, we're at Capital Church, we're finishing up our ninth year at Oak City, we are pre-K through, we'll be eighth grade next year's plan, pandemic is throwing a little wrench in things, but we'll see, and I just want to say we love being in Garner, we really want to invest in the community, we want to invest in the kids here, we have a healthy scholarship program that serves low-income children as well, and ultimately, we want to raise up great citizens for this community, and since the move has been great, and we've got a lot of, about 40 to 50% of our families come from this area, and so thank you very much for having us here and appreciate your support.
See if anybody has a question for you, sir, anybody? Okay, thank, thank you very much, good to see you again, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Fair enough. Anybody else wish to testify for the applicant at this point? Okay.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Bun, I am at 149 Elkstown Trail in Garner, and my kids actually attend school at Oak City Academy, they have for the last couple of years, and I've had the chance to get to know Danny and Carrie, who run the school on a very personal basis, and the education there is fantastic, they make sure that it's a, it's a very holistic approach to child development, but it's also, like Danny said, probably one of the best parts is the scholarship program that we've been able to participate in, and so funding kids from low-income neighborhoods in, in this area and bringing them in to provide that level of education as well, so hoping to see you guys pass this as everything gets put together here properly, but excited, I think that, I'm confident that the city in general will really benefit from this school being in place, so, thanks.
Question for this gentleman, anybody? None? Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no one else from the applicant, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this proposal? Turners from the public? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Jones, are there any other bits of information that we need to hear, or this cover everything?
No, sir, not in my aware of.
Okay, all right, I'm going to, thank you, I'm going to close the public hearing, and council, a motion would now be in order.
Mr. Mayor, in regards to the SUP SP 19-19 Oak City Academy, a move that the council accept the staff statements regarding plan consistency in Section 5 of this report as our own, find that the application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.14. D, and therefore approve SUP SP 1919 Oak City Academy with the eight specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made, and at least Mr. Matthews seconded, or several others. Any other questions or comments at this point before we vote? Hearing none, council, what is, what is your desire regarding this motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Okay, it is approved by unanimous vote, and I would say congratulations, we look forward to hearing good things from, from our new folks out on Benson Road. Okay. Okay, the, the next item of business is CUDZ 1910 and CUP SP 1925 Hudson Hardware, Mr. Banford will be presenting on this particular hearing, I see him out there now, this is a conditional use rezoning and a site plan approval. Both of those. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we will hear initially from Mr. Banford, has everybody been sworn? Yes, David, let me, yeah, let me remind council of the instructions I gave earlier regarding the quasi judicial hearing, and I need to inquire of council if anybody has had any ex parte communications or any other sharing of information that would affect your objective opinion in regards to this hearing, are there any?
Mr. Mayor, I had some ex parte communications with Mr. Lee Hudson, the owner of the property, he contacted me actually before we ever filed a site plan last year, I'd asked him my opinion, and he had some questions regarding it through the process, and some emails that I forwarded to staff through Mr. Hodges and also Mr. Trezenberg, so any correspondence we had was forwarded to staff, so they were aware of it. And for all everyone who doesn't know, I worked for Mr. Hudson and his brother Howard for eighteen years, so nineteen eighty through nineteen ninety-seven. So, I do know the family well, so just laying that out upfront.
Okay.
That's fine. No problem.
We're good. Okay. Nobody else, I believe? Okay, we're good. All right, I believe I opened the public hearing, and I will hear from Mr. Banford. Thanks, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of counsel. This is a conditional use zoning request accompanied by a conditional use site plan request. The project is Hudson's Hardware. It's located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Benson Road and US Highway Seventy West. The project area is 3.84 acres in size. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on May the eighteenth, and Planning Commission did recommend approval and confirm staff findings that the site plan was in compliance with the UDO. This map shows the project boundary. Benson Road is located to the west. Highway Seventy runs along the south, and St. Mary's Street connects from West Main Street south down in Dead Ends into the project site. The current use is retail sales of hardware supplies and lawn and garden equipment. There's a commercial use directly to the east. There's some light automotive service and I believe some office uses. To the north, there are some single-family homes. To the northeast, there's the Garner baseball fields. On the west side of Benson Road, this area here, there's, I believe, a single-family house and an office, and that will go away with the future bridge project. This is a Google street view of the rezoning site looking north along Benson Road. This map shows the zoning in this area of Garner. The rezoning site is split between service/business conditional use. This is the red area at the northeast corner. And then, the project site also includes some area in this vicinity, zoned residential twelve. This is all under the same ownership. Directly to the east, we have some community retail zoning. To the west, we have some office and institutional zoning. And the zoning to the north is predominantly single-family R-12. We do have some multifamily on Benson Road to the north near the railroad bridge. This is a list of rezoning cases in this area of Garner. The oldest one we have on file is from nineteen ninety. The most recent case was in nineteen, I'm sorry, two thousand nineteen, where the town of Garner rezoned the depot site. The existing zoning classification, again, a small portion, about 1.95 acres, is zoned single-family residential twelve. And the business area is currently zoned service/business conditional use District Fifty-Eight, and this is about 1.89 acres. The requested zoning for the entire boundary, and this would include the service/business conditional use Fifty-Eight area plus the R-12 area, the requested zoning is service business conditional use District Two Twenty-Three, and this would be a total acreage of 3.84 acres. The proposed use will still be retail sales with indoor/outdoor display. As part of this conditional use request, the applicant has proposed that the following uses would be permissible on the site. So, while no change of use is proposed at this time, any of these uses could theoretically go on the site in the future, and these would have to come back for site plan approval. We have uses under household living, community service, daycares, educational facilities and services, healthcare, religious institutions, office. Several uses under retail sales and service, and this would include some outdoor storage or outdoor operations, commercial parking, restaurants, light industrial indoor use, manufacturing and production indoor use only, and wholesale sales. I will point out that this property is within the Highway Seventy overlay district, so any outdoor storage or outdoor display would need to be properly screened. Highway Fifty, Benson Road, and Highway Seventy are both major thoroughfares. And the project site has approximately 246 feet of road frontage on Benson Road. And this chart shows the NC DOT traffic counts for this area of Benson Road. The two thousand nineteen traffic counts will be available later this summer, so the most recent counts we have is from two thousand seventeen. Moving to the Garner Forward Plan, we will look at the future land use map, and then we will look at the guiding principles. The future land use map shows the majority of the rezoning site as neighborhood commerce center, and a small portion to the north of the rezoning site falls within the mixed-density neighborhood center. The neighborhood commerce center, the plan recommends retail sales and service, convenience stores, restaurants, or office uses. Within the mixed-density neighborhood center, the plan recommends mixing single-family townhomes or apartments at both medium and high densities. Moving forward to the guiding principles, the guiding principles and recommendations for commercial development and working spaces are found on page sixty-nine through seventy-four. Staff finds this request in support of the following principles under working places. Attract unique commercial establishments, page sixty-eight. This rezoning and proposed development would provide for an expansion of an existing established neighborhood hardware, lawn, and garden center. Number two, develop the north. North Garner is undergoing and will continue to experience a major renaissance of development pressures from downtown Raleigh moves south. Investing in streetscaping maintenance and parks and seeking opportunities for redevelopment of commercial and residential properties has happened and should continue to occur. This is on page seventy-two. This rezoning and proposed development are located within the boundary of North Garner as defined in the two thousand four North Garner plan, and that boundary was north of Highway Seventy. In addition, this project will include the redevelopment of a residential property to commercial. So, the portion of the project site that was zoned, single-family R-12, would redevelop into commercial. Zoning consistency statement. This requested zoning from single-family R-12 and service-business conditional use District Fifty-Eight to service-business conditional-use District Two Twenty-Three is consistent with the Garner Forward's comprehensive plans, guiding principles, and recommendations of the working spaces section of the plan. This requested zoning is also compatible with the surrounding zonings in the area. The majority of the site is zoned service-business conditional use. We have community retail zoning to the east. We also have some office and institutional zoning on the west side. While the proposal is consistent with the guiding principles, it is not entirely consistent with the future land use map as a portion of that boundary falls within that mixed-density neighborhood center. Therefore, this rezoning would require an amendment to the future land use map to designate that portion from mixed-density neighborhood center to neighborhood commerce center. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. This concludes the rezoning presentation, and Stacy Harper will pick up and walk you through the details of the proposed site plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Banford. Questions, counsel, for Mr. Banford as it relates to his presentation of the zoning manner? We'll start with Ms. Beringer. Mr. Delinger. Vance. Singleton. Mr. Matthews. Okay. Hearing none. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Again, the acreage is 3.84 acres, and the use is an accessory storage building. The minimum lot size for this requested rezoning would be 6,000 square feet, and you see the setbacks there as well. That is the site plan before you. It looks like it's jumped a little bit, but you do still see the existing building there that David was showing you. And then, the gray building in the back along St. Mary's Street is the proposed accessory building. The tree coverage of ten percent is met with 10.17 provided. There are perimeter buffers, four that are thirty-five feet wide and three that are fifteen feet wide. Buffer one, which is on the site plan, they're numbered. Buffer one adjacent to the single-family home will have a permanent landscape easement on the residential property, and that property is owned by the applicant in this case. The street buffers along Benson Road as well as the street trees on St. Mary's Street, there's a seven-and-a-half-foot buffer on Benson Road, and street trees are provided every forty feet on average. There's no open space required as this is a non-residential development. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and approved this site plan. The site does not contain any FEMA-designated floodplain. The site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and eighty-five percent TSS removal, as well as water quantity requirements for the one, ten, and twenty-five year storm events. This redevelopment plan proposes a bioretention area to treat impervious surface from the additional new impervious surface that does exceed that eighty-five percent TSS threshold. A nitrogen offset payment will be required. The existing use is currently connected to both public water and sewer, and there's no additional connections proposed. The existing access, there's two on, two driveways on Benson Road. There is a proposed addition, the proposed addition will be accessed through an existing parking lot, as well as a driveway off the cul-de-sac on St. Mary's Street. Additional right-of-way is being dedicated along St. Mary's Street, and the cul-de-sac then will be entirely within the right-of-way. So, the elevations of the building with the block on the front, the brick, and then the rest of it would be metal panels. There's one parking space required for the addition, and they have provided two parking spaces additional. The proposed lighting for the addition meets the requirements of the lighting ordinance, as well as staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan recommends sharrows or pavement markings that indicate that the area is supposed to be shared by bicyclists on Benson Road. However, since this project does not constitute a change of use, changes to NC fifty are not required. A review of the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan revealed no plan recommendations in the project area. Therefore, this project as proposed may be considered consistent with that plan. After sufficient review and plan revisions, staff finds that this project, as now proposed, conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. One, prior to receipt of approved plans, engineering department inspection fees must be paid to the town. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a recombination plat must be filed and recorded with the permanent landscape easement on the adjacent single-family dwelling lot. Three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the nitrogen offset payment is required. And four, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a stormwater control measure maintenance plan and associated memorandum of agreement shall be recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. The Planning Commission did review this request at the May eighteenth meeting. With a unanimous vote, the Planning Commission did confirm staff's findings that CUP SP nineteen twenty-five is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. And with a vote of four to one, the commission accepted the staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval of CUDZ nineteen ten to the town council. Staff recommendations for the rezoning request and site plan are highlighted in the motion worksheets on the following pages. For the zoning, that would be on page sixty-three of your packet, and for the site and subdivision plan, on page sixty-five. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and the applicant is also here if you have any questions of the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. Okay. Counsel, questions for Ms. Harper? I'll start with Mr. Vance down here.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, good. Mr. Delinger, I'll come this way.
A question about the connection on St. Mary's. And is that necessary for the viability of the use of the structure?
I think it is for them, the way it would enter, they would enter and exit. They might can speak more to the viability of it, but they do want that connection, yes, sir.
Beringer, you think? Mr. Matthews, okay. All right. We're finished with you. Who from the applicant desires to testify? Mr. Hudson, I believe.
Good evening, lady and gentlemen. It's great to be out and with you tonight. Don't get to see many of you as often as I used to.
Be, sir.
My name's Lee Hudson. I live on the Wake County-Johnston County line at 7021 Farmdale Road, Raleigh, North Carolina, have for forty-two years. My brother Howard is here with me and appreciate his support as we find a need to, for two reasons primarily, a need to bring tractor-trailers into the rear of our lot where now they're having to come into the front of our lot and go around the building and unload in the back parking lot with no loading dock. So, two things just happened recently. The impending bridge development is going to cut off our front entrance. Now, all vehicles will have to enter at our rear entrance and then come around the west side of the building to come to the front parking lot. Tractor-trailers can make that turn. They made sure that they could make that turn, but they would have to oppose traffic that would be coming out if they did that. So, our desire is to have those tractor-trailers come in the back parking lot, come down to this new building, pull down toward the baseball field, and be able to back up to a four-foot loading dock. So, for the first time in Hudson's history, we'll be able to drive a tractor-trailer into a, I mean, a forklift into a tractor-trailer and unload those heavy lawnmowers. Our build, our business has sort of transcended from when Gray worked with us. We just unloaded probably, you know, fifteen or twenty tote boxes out of the back of a truck, wasn't a big deal. But now, we're having to buy tractor-trailer loads of lawnmowers and horse feed to compete. And I can tell you, it's really, really a pain to have to unload that in a parking lot, and it impedes the traffic coming around our building as well. So, those two things, the bridge development and our real, you know, sincere need for... So, those two things, the bridge development and our real, you know, sincere need for a good place to unload. David Blevins is with me with B&amp;K Engineering, who worked with the town to get us, get all the i's dotted and t's crossed, and there were quite a few of them. Most of those i's and t's had foliage on them. So, hopefully, we've come to an agreement. I will say that at one time, it looked like we were going to have to have 411 new plantings, which to me was just, and I understand better now. This has been a learning process since I called Gray and Ken and asked, well, tell me the process. I'm, you know, this is getting really confusing to me, but I understand now why those trees and shrubs were proposed, but Jeff Treisenberg did finally meet me on the lot, and we walked over it, and he agreed. There was just a lot of foliage there already, and he felt like, quote-unquote, "We could probably get by with 50% of that." So, we're now looking closer to 200 trees and shrubs based on his comments, and I think that's more than adequate. So, with that, I'll stop, and if there's any other questions you may have.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Mayor, I remember distinctly when the designs for the bridge were being shown to the public, that was one major issue of getting, how to get trucks into your location. And it's good to hear that an alternative method was determined, was decided on.
If you'll remember, you know, you could do it.
Yes.
Without bringing into, you know, traffic head-on. That's some more that'd stop and wait to allow that to happen.
I remember that.
Okay. Mr. Singleton? Thought I heard.
I was just gonna say, we loaded a whole lot more than 15 and 20 boxes. I don't know where that came from.
You would remember, huh?
I'll remember.
Mr. Matthews, anything?
None, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hudson, I believe. Excuse me, okay, all right, one more.
I mean, how much traffic do you anticipate using the intersection down there in the cul-de-sac with St. Mary's? And clearly not, like you said, large enough for tractor-trailers, but it did mention in the community meeting about some box-cut, box trucks. How much volume of traffic do you anticipate coming in that back?
Yeah, we do not anticipate any additional traffic. We go out that way occasionally with our store pickup, maybe on the way to make a delivery on that side of town. The large door you saw on the west end of the building is primarily for us to go in and get that merchandise and bring it out, unload the big orders in the back, and then just bring out the lawnmowers and feed a pallet at the time to come down. We may occasionally, you know, load a pallet on a pickup for feed delivery or something, and it may go down, but that's no additional traffic than what we already have. We don't anticipate any intentional deliveries coming down St. Mary Street.
I mean, it makes sense to have another exit out from this property this way, instead of just having one in and one out. It makes sense to have a back, or just want to have some idea what kind of traffic and volume up and down that street.
We have spoken with two gentlemen here tonight that had that same concern. I hope they're satisfied with our conversation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hudson. Unless anybody else has a question for him? Okay. Anybody else from the applicant wish to testify at this point? We're good?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We will hear at this point from those who wish to speak, who have concerns about the project or questions about it. Are there any? Okay, hearing, seeing none. No other testimony to be given at this point. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask the counsel for a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me?
Fair to make a motion. It don't make no difference, sir. You want to say something, sir?
Did you have a question or?
I was going to make the motion, but if.
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that the town find that although the rezoning request is partly inconsistent with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan as detailed in Section 5 of the staff report, it is reasonable in the public interest because it will likely allow appropriate types of businesses and industry at the described location, which will provide opportunities for access to goods and/or services useful to the surrounding area, allow development of retail sales, services, convenience stores, restaurants, or office or users as the desired ends identified in the future land use, allow and provide an opportunity to attract and develop unique non-residential establishments, and therefore, I move further that the Town Council adopt ordinance 2020-4056 approving rezoning request number CUDZ-1910, and in doing, and in so doing, also amend the town's comprehensive growth plan to reclassify approximately .69 acres as mixed-density neighborhood center, MDNC, to neighborhood commercial center.
Okay, motion been properly made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other question, comment by counsel before we vote? Hearing none. All council members in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, please say no. Okay, that motion carries as it relates to the zoning. Now, I believe we need a motion on the site plan. Am I right on that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council accept the staff's statements regarding plan consistency in Section 7 of this report as our own and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.14.1D, and therefore approve CUP SP-1925 Hudson's Heartwell with the four conditions be listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Okay, motion properly made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Did you get those, Ms. Gibson? Okay. All right, before we vote, any other question or comment, counsel? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no. And it is so ordered. Congratulations, Mr. Hudson. I know you and your family have been in business here a long time. Hopefully, this will help to continue that process. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item of business are a series of annexations, I believe I'm correct here. Let me see, Mr. Banford, you're going to lead us through each one of these. I think we'll vote on them individually, so if you will lead with item three, I believe it is.
Okay, before you tonight, we've got seven annexations. These are voluntary, and these are all related to connecting into town water and/or sewer. The first one is Annexation Case 20-01. This is a site down near the roundabout at Vandor Springs Road and Buffalo Road, and this site was subdivided into four tracks. Single-family development is proposed on each of those four lots, and water and sewer is available, and per the agreement with City of Raleigh, they are required to connect and therefore file annexation petition. Also included in the annexation is approximately .38 acres within the right-of-way of Vandor Springs Road, and that's the area highlighted in yellow on the map. And the addresses for the four properties is 125, 145, and 165 Cedar Croft Drive. This is a private road that goes in into the site that serves the tracks that are in the back. Also included is 2306 Vandor Springs Road. This is the tract that's directly in front with frontage on Vandor Springs Road. Total acreage is approximately 10.85. Zoning is R-40, and again, they are wanting to build a single-family homes on each of those four lots, and they are requesting to connect into public water and sewer. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Question by counsel? Hearing none. Let's see, anyone else here care to speak to this issue? Hearing none. Okay, I believe, let's see, do I need to close this at this point or no?
Vote on this one.
That's right, yeah. Thank you.
Mayor, move we adopt ordinance 2020-4057 to extend the corporate limits.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Did you get that, Ms. Gibson? Okay. Any further discussion, counsel? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no. And the motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Banford, you're still up?
The next case is Annexation Case 20-02. This is at 110 Rupert Road. This is a commercial site. They've got, they came in for site plan approval, and this property will also connect, I believe, just into town water. This is on Rupert Road, near the intersection of Percy Drive, and this is on the west side of Garner, west of US 401. The acreage is approximately 2.19 acres. Zoning is service business. The case for the site plan is SP-19-21, and again, they filed an annexation petition because they will be connecting into, I believe, just town water in that location. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Banford. Questions, counsel? Hearing none. Anybody here wish to speak to this? None. Okay, a motion will be in order.
Mayor, move we adopt ordinance 2020-4058 to extend the corporate limits.
Second. Properly seconded. Motion made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no. So ordered. Thank you.
The next is Annexation Case 20-05. This is a property on Creech Road. It's on the west side of Creech Road, just south of the bridge, and this is, I believe, just south of the, I believe it's the Gatewood subdivision. This property is approximately 14.82 acres in size, and they came in to subdivide the property into four lots to build single-family homes. The properties zone R-40, and sewer runs through the middle of the property, and public water is along Creech Road, so all four of those tracks will connect into town water and sewer. The case for the subdivision plat was MP-19-12, and that went through plat review and was approved by staff. So, again, this is to, this request is related to connecting into both town water and sewer. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, counsel? Hearing none. Motion will be in order.
Mayor, move we adopt ordinance 2020-4059 to extend the corporate limits.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Thank you, Ms. Behringer, for the second. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. So ordered. Thank you. Mr. Banford?
The next case is Annexation 20-09. This is a single-family lot on Bryan Road, directly across from the elementary school, and the property owner got a building permit to build a single-family house, and water is available, so per the annexation agreement, I'm sorry, the Raleigh-Garner merger agreement with City of Raleigh, they are required to connect into the town water line because it is right there, and annexation petition is required. So, this is for public water connection. Address is 8300 Bryan Road. It's about three acres. Zoning is R-40. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Question from counsel? Hearing none. Okay. Comments otherwise? Anybody in the public? Hearing none. Motion is in order for this particular annexation.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we, the council approve Annexation of 2009.
Okay, second. Properly made by Ms. Behringer. Further discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. So ordered. Okay, Mr. Banford?
The next case is Annexation 20-10, and this is a property out on US Highway 70 East. This is near Camping World. This is the large industrial building that's been under construction. This development will connect into both town water and sewer. The size of the property is about 12.8 acres. The address is 2337 US Highway 70 East. Zoning is light industrial. The site plan case number is SP-18-15, which is approved on March 11, 2019, and again, this development will connect into public water and sewer. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions by counsel? Hearing none. Comments, questions from the public? Hearing none. Motion's in order, counsel?
Mayor, move we approve ordinance 2020-4061 to extend the corporate limits.
Motion properly made and seconded by Ms. Behringer. Mr. Singleton. Comments, questions? Hearing none from counsel. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. So ordered. Thank you.
This is Annexation Case 20-11, and this is a single-family lot that was subdivided, I believe, last year to build a single-family home. This is on Maxwell Drive. The address is 900 Maxwell Drive. Acreage is approximately .623 acres. Zoning is R-9, conditional use District 153, and a building permit has been issued to build a single-family home on this lot, and this will connect to public water and sewer. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Questions? Hearing none. Comments from the public? Hearing none. Okay, motions in order, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Annexation of 20, 2011? Is it 2011? 2011, yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Taken by Ms. Behringer. Okay. Motion properly made and seconded. Hearing no other comments. I'll call for a vote on this annexation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And it is so ordered. Mr. Banford, I believe you have another one, right?
This may be the last case. This is Annexation 20-12, and these, there are some vacant tracks that are in this neighborhood off of New Rand Road. Public sewer runs through the site on this aerial photo. You can see where the sewer easement is. So, these lots have access to public sewer, and public water is also served to this neighborhood. The property owner wishes to build single-family homes on these lots. So, this, again, this is a request for public water and sewer. So, the tracks to the south here in red would be a contiguous annexation, so I have two ordinances prepared for this case. The tracks located here would be a satellite annexation, since they are separated by a property that's owned by a different owner. Total acreage for the entire annexation is approximately 3.23 acres. Zoning is R-15, single-family, and the addresses are 901, 903, 907, 909, 911, and 913 Long Avenue. Plans are to construct about single-family homes with public water and sewer. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Banford. Questions by counsel?
Quick question. Do you have any idea of, like, six lots and five houses?
Yes, I can answer that. We have, there's some floodplain that's located to the east of these lots, so this southernmost lot is not buildable. We have a recombination. We have a recombination plat in review now to recombine both of these lots into one tract. So it's six tracks, but there's really going to be only five homes.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Bamford? Okay, hearing none. Comments from the public? Hearing none. Motion's in order.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve annex 20-12.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion properly made and seconded. Comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So ordered. Thank you, Mr. Bamford. I believe that covers all of your items. Is that right? Counsel, let's say 30. I think we can continue on, if that's okay. We are next to our business is the budget. Are you ready to proceed? Good evening, sir.
Just gonna try to do it with the mask, but I'm probably better off. All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of counsel. Tonight, we're going to hopefully be adopting the FY 2021 budget. This was a very interesting budget year. We had the revaluation from the Wake County. We also had the deal with COVID-19. We have the social unrest. In addition, staff continued with the five-year model. We tried to incorporate that with our bond program. So there was a lot of information, a lot of things to consider. So I want to commend counsel on working through all that and hope coming together with what I think is a fairly, a good adopted budget, or a budget. So just reviewing the schedule. On 5/19, the town hosted a public hearing to offer residents opportunity to provide input on the budget. On 5/20, May 20th, the town hosted an all-day-long budget work session where counsel provided input on the budget to staff, and residents were welcome to attend to that as well. On June 1st, the town hosted a second public hearing on the budget where residents were allowed to attend. On June 2nd, the town hosted a virtual public hearing to offer residents opportunity to participate through Facebook Live stream. On June 3rd, the town hosted a half-day budget work session where we worked through the final details of the budget. And we obviously are here for proposed budget adoption. So we started with the recommended budget. Counsel made the following changes, based on a variety of different factors. So you can see the recommended tax rate is above what the original recommendation was. And that's based on the fact that there are a variety of needs. Counsel and staff looked at the multi-year budget and realized that we were going to potentially have increased several years in a row to meet growth. So that decision was made based on that and the variety of needs that popped up throughout the year to increase the rate. We have some fund balance to cover some police equipment. And the town also, based on favorable rates, chose to finance the vehicles that were required for purchase this year. So that would be some savings within this year's budget or some additional revenue. With that, the town funded pay equity, which I'll get more into, reinstated merit for employees, continued the relationship with the town lobbyist, funded three firefighters, community liaison officer, perform, which allows the town to perform maintenance on various items, whether it be park-related maintenance or just HVAC replacements in buildings, bond prep, one-time projects, an engineer, engineer plan reviewer, which will allow the engineering department to establish a dedicated capital projects manager for the future bonds. We also converted some part-time positions in public works in the streets division to full-time. We have the one-time capital with police, based on the current situation going on with the social unrest and a variety of just needs that they have on an annual basis. IT cybersecurity training, which will allow the IT department to provide better training for staff on what to click on and not to click on, and a variety of other cybersecurity-related trainings, basically. We reinstated the downtown Garner art program, which will allow the continued improvement of the downtown overall aesthetic appeal, which will make it hopefully a continued destination. We also had some savings that we recognized based on the final quote for workers' compensation, and had some other smaller reductions. So what the adopted budget allows us to do is, if we're a couple of different main categories or main themes, I would say, it allows the town to fund critical public safety personnel and items. So if in the police department, we, from the recommended to the adopted, added a community liaison officer, which will significantly enhance the department's ability to provide proactive community outreach. And at this time, when community strengthening and building those relationships is really important, I feel like that was a great position to add. We already, in the recommended budget, had the school resource officer, which will allow the appropriate student-to-staff ratio to continue at South Garner High School as the school adds 12th graders. We also funded some one-time capital equipment for police. We added three firefighters, which will allow the Garner Volunteer Fire Department to complete the staffing model of having four full-time personnel in all staffed units, which is consistent with most localities in Wake County. We also provided pay equity, so there's a comprehensive review of staff within the town and in the Garner Volunteer Fire Department to review their pay scale and to review where folks were within the pay scale. And based on this, it was, the consultant indicated that 57 of 173 town employees and 45 out of 65 volunteer firefighter employees were out of range or out of where they should have been with their pay. So this adjustment will allow that to get fixed, which will allow us to better retain staff and recruit new staff. It also has a variety of items for the upcoming potential bond referendum. So the one-time funding will be critical for allowing staff to hire consultants to review upcoming projects. This will allow us to determine the feasibility of these projects and to get more accurate cost estimates, which is important as you're planning throughout a bond referendum. And it also allows for the dedication, as I mentioned, of a capital projects manager in the engineering department. That's something we didn't have at the last referendum, and the town engineer, I think, mostly took that role. So that will allow the assistant town engineer to take that role and to become really active in the day-to-day management of projects, which we think will be important with managing the variety of projects that we'll have. It also funds the maintenance of existing assets. So with the perform dollars, the public facilities repair and maintenance, we will have an annual increment of funding that we can go through and look and rank all the different priorities that the town has with maintenance requirements, and actually be able to fund some of those in a proactive manner as opposed to a reactive manner. So, for example, as opposed to starting to fix the roof when it starts to leak, fix the roof when we know it's going to start to leak, and potentially save some dollars and do it in a more proactive manner. And while we're doing all that, it still ensures that Garner remains one of the most affordable localities in Wake County, or the most affordable based on what we think. And that's this chart. And that is based on the effective tax rate. So when you look at how much each individual is going to be paying based on the tax rate of the locality, as well as the value of homes in that locality, Garner is projected at this point to be the most affordable. And that is based on the locality's recommended budgets. We were not able to update this based on adopted budget, since most of that's happening tonight. So based on that, Garner will be the most affordable based on where other localities are within this year's budget. So with that, the only other thing I had, we did as part of the most recent meeting, have a conversation about reviewing the town's fees. And we felt, based on a variety of factors, that the primary impact would be on the fee in lieu of parklands rate, or the potential primary impact could there, could be. But it made more sense to get some additional information on upcoming projects related to parks and rec, and incorporate those fees a little bit later on. And then the other fees, that we would be able to collect planning dollars that would actually be able to help our operational budget, because fee in lieu is limited to just building new parks, would be pretty minimal. And that it made more sense for staff to do a little bit additional analysis and bring it back to counsel as a quarterly, as part of a future quarterly review, which we were planning to do anyway, based on the unknown nature of COVID and the fact that there might be adjustments that we have to make. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Franks. Sure enough. I'll start down here with Mr. Vance. Questions?
No questions.
Okay, coming around.
First, the staff did a great job, and counsel, and the hearing, everybody with getting this year's budget together under such difficult circumstances. For my first pass, it wasn't too bad, I think. I do want to comment on the fee memo that you provided around the fee in lieu of parks and identifying other revenue sources. And it says that the net impact of the adjustments could generate between 550 to 1.6 million dollars in additional revenue with fees set at the highest defensible amount. And it goes on to say, however, it's important to note that 500,000 to 1.5 million of that is associated with fee in lieu of parkland, which can only be utilized for parks. And given that 94% of all the fee increases are encapsulated in, or the potential ones are encapsulated in fee in lieu of parkland, I don't see the real need to do a huge delay in doing this huge assessment, when it's really trivial, the amount of other revenue that could be generated. And I would recommend that we, based on what is reasonable, I wouldn't say the highest defensible amount at this point, but I would strongly recommend that we take the opportunity, as we craft this budget, to go ahead and incorporate these fees that their research has indicated isn't going to put us out of balance with other municipalities. And it's a significant amount of revenue. And the longer we wait, the, it's, you know, more developments come in, and they don't have to do it. And parks are what make Garner great. We have to fund them. They add value to developers. They can say, look around the corner, there's a great park. As far as what we would use it for, purchase new parkland and develop. We have a master plan. There are plenty of unsourced expenditures there. There, we will not run out of ways to use park money, even with the master plans we have in place now. So my recommendation would be for the council, along with this budget, to adopt a rate increase that would capture some of this, and we could revisit it if, at one of those quarterly meetings, to see if we needed to go a little bit higher or, or something. But, you know, you wait four months and five developments come in of 400 houses, and you're just leaving money on the table at that point. And we have expenditures in parks that we have already slated to be built, lands purchased, we got to pay for it. And we've been very conservative, given the circumstances with the increase this year. And I think this puts the burden on the future to pay for the future. So that's my comment to counsel at this time.
Other council members care to comment? I mean, I know we're getting ready to vote on the budget here. If I, did I understand you, Mr. Dellinger, to say you preferred to see some additional information related to the fee structure?
I think they have, they've done the analysis. I think-
Yeah, I saw what Mr. Franks sent out.
But I think what we don't have right before us tonight, which I think we could maybe incorporate into a motion of some sort, is a definitive rate increase with regards to the fee in lieu of parkland. That's just too much money to leave on the table if they've already done the analysis and show that a rate, an increase, would not put us out of balance with other municipalities. So-
And I do have now on your screen the comparison that we did. So for fee in lieu of parklands, Garner for single-family detached homes is 1,147 per unit, multifamily townhouse apartment, 895 per unit. Fuqua is actually in line with us on the lower end, single-family detached of $1,000. Multifamily, $25,000 per acre. Morrisville, single-family detached is 1/35th of an acre times the number of dwelling units. Multifamily would be 2,172. Wake Forest, single-family detached, 3,281. Or single-family attached of multifamily, 1,958. And then Holly Springs is single-family detached, 4,705. Single-family attached, 4,555. And multifamily, 4,420. So there is a fairly decent range, if you look at the other localities in terms of where we could end up. So that's where the variance in terms of the amount of revenue we could generate comes from. It depends on how, if we want to be kind of in the middle, stay at the lower ends, or try to go up to the top. If we wanted to consider that.
See, if I understand, I want to go to other council members to give them a chance to comment on the budget. But I'm trying to decide if what your proposal would be a standalone motion aside from the vote on the budget, or if this is an amendment to the information we currently have.
It would be just an amendment to the fee schedule, or change the fee schedule. It wouldn't have any, we don't actually budget for fee in lieu of parkland's revenue, because we can't spend it when it comes in for operational needs. So we would just have to change the fee schedule.
Okay.
Let me just assist, Mr. Mayor. We got the budget to talk about. Let's get these numbers, and then we have it the work session and vote them on at the work session.
I'd agree with it.
I don't want to sit here and make a number and then change our mind halfway through, because we don't need to make a decision tonight, then evaluate it in August or September, and then make another decision. We need to look at it, because it's the first I saw of it, and evaluate it. And then we can make a motion, and then that way we can apply it to the fees effective July 1st, correct? If we adopted our final last meeting, we can do it effective July 1st.
We could.
You could do it effective any day. That's what it is. You wouldn't do it the next day. That's right.
Right. In the past, when we've changed fees like this, we would do our analysis, we would take it to one of our committees, either law and finance or parks, public works. And then have that committee look at it and talk about the, you know, whether it's in line with what we think it should be, based on what we're going to use the money for. That's part of that reasonableness. You know, how much is the cost of land in Garner per acre? You know, what do we plan to build in the next few years or whatever? So there is some kind of loose analysis. It's not a perfect formula, but there is some analysis that goes into what number you choose. You can't just pick the, you know, highest number and just stockpile that and not spend it for many, many years. And then we got to spread that money to the areas in which we collect some of the funds, or have something regional. And then we have done some outreach to the development community before imposing those type of fees, due to some past meetings we've had with the development community, and permitting, and all of that. You know, at one time, we had a whole committee where we met with the development community and talked about some of our fees and development and some of our regulations. So that would be veering away from what we've done in the past. I'm not saying that's, you can't do it, but I'm just, you know, to put it in tonight and not have any forewarning, you know, we might-
Because if we adopted, we may not, we may not have made it, if we adopted, say, at the work session, we probably wouldn't have made it effective July 1st. We would set it off 30 or 60 days. That's what we normally do with these. In fact, the last major fee schedule, we did it six months in advance.
We did it. We passed last year some planning and development fees, and they didn't go into effect until January.
Right.
But we, you know, made it clear that that was coming.
Thank you. Let me, let me get on around to the other council members. We're commenting or questioning Mr. Franks. And then if, if we need to come back to the potential proposal by Mr. Dellinger, we can or bring it to work session. But, so I'll go to Ms. Behringler at this point. Nothing, Mr. Singleton? Do you have a question coming?
Behringler, did?
No, none.
No questions. I'll follow what Mr. Dellinger said. I appreciate the work staff putting into it, and the points here that you put the emphasis in here. Michael, I appreciate that. You know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a challenging year. A lot of challenges face all of us. And trying to look after our first responders, I think is critical. It's interesting, the community liaison opposition was in the budget long before all these issues happened around the country, because the police departments saw that we needed that. And so it's very important that, I believe that be the start of community liaison with police in our, in our town, so, in the community. So I appreciate that. Also, the fact that the equity issue and the pay compression issue affected this number of employees, and I believe that 60% of those are first responders. So I think it's important to help those first responders and all our employees in regard to the compression and pay equity issues. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matthews?
I would agree that we need to handle this, if we're going to look at fees. Let's look at, like we're proposing here with a work session, and put the proper amount of time into it, and keep it separate from what we're dealing with here tonight. In regards to the budget, appreciate all the staff and everybody working together, to include the counsel and all the staff and everybody in this room. include the council and all the staff and everybody in this room, to come up with a workable solution. I think instead of putting some Band-Aids on some things, we've actually fixed some things. And, and like a lot going on in this world, I'm very proud of our police department. I think we're one of the finest ones in this state, and I'm proud of this board stepping up to the plate and taking care of equipment issues, pay issues, and compression being a part of that. And our fire department, well, second to none back there. Chief, you know, it's, we've got two great departments in our emergency services, and they do an outstanding job, and proud to talk to them. And when I'm shopping for food, I run into a lot of the EMS and police, and they're always very talkative, and, and the kids like talking to our policemen, that's a good thing. And so we've got a great town and getting this compression taken care of, and I think we've got a budget here, you know, you don't always make everybody happy, but when, you know, by coming together like we do, we're doing a whole lot better than some of the other towns in our county here. And so, but if we continue working together, sharing of ideas and bringing things forth, I've always encouraged emergency services, come talk to us, let us know what's going on, you know, so we've got time to think about it and not get surprised by anything. But nobody likes tax increases, but we've got to move forward, and I think we've got a budget here that I can support, and we can pass it and move on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Baggett, do I need to, in a hearing like this, see if there's anybody in, in the public who wishes to comment or ask a question?
You could, but you don't have to. You've had your public hearing.
I was, I was thinking that we did, so unless there's anyone here that has a burning question, we will, we will proceed. Given the discussion around the council, unless anybody else has a question, Mr. Dillinger, or I, I believe there's probably some consensus that we can come back to that issue, but not make it further part of maybe the discussion or vote tonight?
I mean, my last, I mean, we can talk to developers, they're not going to like it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, they're not going to want an increase, and I had no idea that the disparity was so dramatic between where Garner was and these other municipalities. That's startling, actually. If I were developer, I'd be tripping to get into Garner, too. I'm very hesitant to at least not make a motion to make an amendment.
We don't have enough information. One, we don't have any estimates of what the master plan is shown for the parks. I know it's going to be multiple millions and millions of dollars, but we don't have any of that information at, at the current time, so I don't believe you'll get a vote. You can make a motion, but I just don't believe this can get a second, because we need more information. I'm not going to raise fees and do it off of whim and then decide later not to do it, because it's not going to be effective in two weeks or three weeks. We're going to put up a buffer out there so that developers know that it's coming. That's the only thing, that's the way to be fair and reasonable. And, you know, we did something a couple of years ago and changed some fees, and we got slapped on the wrist pretty bad about it, you may not know about that, but anyway, we did. So I don't think you want, I just take it from past experience, let's not do that. I'll tell you after the meeting why.
I'll defer to that. I'll also say, just in ref, you know, being on the Parks and Rec Committee and having reviewed the master plan, there's definitely a need for it, and we will, we can look at it. I think there's definitely room for us to do some things, if we want to keep having nice parks in Garner, so.
Right. And it's multiple, the developed both parks are millions and millions of dollars, and it's not going to all happen in one bond reference, so nobody needs to panic, but it's a lot of money. And that just includes those parks, not including improving other parks and buying future parkland. So yes, your point is well taken.
Yeah, and I, and I believe we can refer that to, 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 to a committee, would it be Public Works?
If you desire to do that, if you want to do it in a work session as a group, that's fine, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Work session can be fine.
Okay.
I would like to mention that we do plan to bring back the parks plans to a work session, July work session, I believe is scheduled for, the, the Meadow Brook and the property and the Yergin property conceptual plans, we'll bring that back, and that'll provide you some more information of what those two pieces of property look like.
Okay.
And of course, the bond in future, we'll talk about the need for other property in other parts of town, too, so.
Okay. All right, good. Any other comments? I think I've heard from everybody, and as mayor, I would just like to comment to this council in particular that I appreciate how you have coalesced around a budget that, from my perspective, has been one of the more, probably the most challenging one, I guess, since I have served the town either as a councilman and now. So I commend this council for, for the work that you put into it, the extra sessions and those things. Think under the circumstances that we find ourselves, certainly the economic circumstances, I think we put together a sound budget that gets us where we hope we want to be. We're not there yet, but thank you very much. So with that, are you ready? I'm ready for a motion, council.
Mayor, we adopt ordinance twenty twenty forty sixty-five, ordinance for the twenty, July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one budget.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton, and I heard a second from Mr. Vance and/or Ms. Behringer. You got that, okay? Any other question or comment? I think we've probably exhausted all those, is that right? So council, all those in favor of, of the motion to adopt this budget, twenty twenty forty sixty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's opposition, please say no. And there is none, so it is so ordered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franks, for all your good work, and all the other budget people who worked on this. Okay, are there any committee reports at this time?
I think we wanted to talk about Public Works, just briefly, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We are hoping to target a Public Works Committee meeting, and we were looking at dates of Wednesday morning, the first of July, or Thursday morning, the second of July, so we can reach out directly to the committee members, but if you want to make note of those dates, we can follow up with you to find out if either one of those dates would work.
Let's see, who is that, Ms. Singleton and Mr. Vance?
Vance.
Okay. Preliminary comments, either one of you?
Follow up offline with you, we don't, we don't need an answer tonight.
Yeah.
That's just our first available dates to do it, we can certainly do it.
First actually probably be better than the second, for me.
I'm good at the one.
Okay, we'll follow up with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, you don't want to move on? Well, yeah, we've got some reports, okay. It is, it is the nine o'clock hour when we ordinarily would take a brief recess, we do, it will take us a little time on some of the other items we have, so I'm going to declare a, a ten-minute recess at this point, and we will come back in ten minutes and complete our agenda. Okay, we're back in regular session after a recess, and we will hear any further summarization of committee reports, and I will recognize Mr. Vance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say that we have received a number of applications for the H R Committee, and we will be going through those committee, uh, applications, Mr. Dillinger and I, in the very near futures, to fill the positions that will be coming open in the very near future.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. I've served on that in the past, and that's very important work, so.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, any other committees to report at this time? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Manager, we will hear from you.
All right, you have in your agenda packet Garner info and list there, and you'll notice there are, in the first few items, some older items dealing with vehicles, and we, you know, have spoken to the enforcement officer, and we have been a little more lenient with some folks depending on the situation due to the COVID nineteen and some of the restrictions and getting some of those things repaired and fixed and moved and all of that, but we'll, we'll go ahead and start following up and try to get some of these items moved off of here. Do you have any questions about any of the other items? We have your building activity report, shows some of the activity and permit activity over the last month or so. And then the other thing I want to talk about is, in light of the George Floyd incident and death, there's been a lot of correspondence that's been sent to towns and police departments throughout the U.S., talking about current police policies, and there's a list called The Eight That Can't Wait, and it's just a list of police items that deal with the use of force. And they're asking, and you've probably seen on the news and the media, they're asking each police force to address those eight uses of force and policies, and to look at their own policies and make any recommendations or changes based on, based on anything that would be considered, that would be considered deadly, or that would maybe escalate the situation instead of de-escalating the situation. So our police has looked at those eight areas, as well as their other use of force policies, and we have a memo here, and we have police representation here, we have Acting Chief Joe Benz here.
On your other side.
Which is over here, and then we have Captain Lori Smith, and we have Captain Mike McKeever here. And I know at some point, we plan to have a community engagement event, they're talking about planning that now. They also have a survey that's active now for residents, and the one thing I would mention is we have been doing community and police engagement prior to the horrible incident that happened, so we've given our community chances to speak, and we're going to continue to do that and engage and continue to try to understand each other. And, you know, we'll look at making changes where we feel like changes need to be made, but with that, I will turn it over to you, Mayor, to see if you want to hear from the police at this time, and talk about any of these, or just in general, and maybe not have to go through them all, but if you want them to say anything.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate Mr. Benz being here, and I've had the privilege of having some limited discussions with him and with you, and I'm, I appreciate the time that he has spent in answering some of my questions, and he is prepared, I know, to address some of these items. I'm satisfied with what I've heard, but if the full council would, would like to hear a little further from Mr. Benz this evening, we'd be happy to, to, to bring him up and let him make some comments and/or try to answer any questions. Maybe that'd be the best thing to do, Mr. Benz. Council, would you like to hear?
Yes.
I wouldn't mind hearing from him, I just have a question as far as the mail, on emails we've gotten. When people say defund the police department, they saying do away with it? Or are they saying don't fund anymore? I don't know exactly what they're saying.
I think there's two groups, two camps there. I think there's a group out there that really wants to defund the police department and use that money for other resources like parks and recreation and other things, and there's also a group out there that is looking at trying to take some of the money they use for, for the police department and re, re-divert those funds to things like social workers and other programs for youth and those kinds of things. And I, I think that, that one, you really can't take from Peter to pay Paul and have the same level of service. There's certainly a place for, and we've talked about this for years at the police department, is we're called upon to do a lot of things that, that really are better suited for social workers and some other things. However, when you're responding to a suicidal subject, you don't want a social worker going into a home with a suicidal person without some kind of law enforcement presence. So there's, there's some pieces of that, and there's certainly some valid points to the police department not being the ones necessarily to deal with, are the best to deal with mental health issues. There's certainly other groups at the county level and those kinds of things that could much better deal with those issues, but as far as a crisis, it's somebody that's in crisis, that, that sometimes we're better suited for that, and we do have that first responder training as, as far as a crisis intervention training and those kinds of things that we can use, I think that's mentioned in the memo, to kind of de-escalate a situation involving someone in a mental health crisis.
But my question, back to my question, are there some people, folks out there who really are saying do away with the police department?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I was hearing, but I have trouble understanding that.
Yeah, I think some of the ones I've heard in the media, when they say do away with the police department, part of that is replacing it with a community-oriented type of policing, instead of a law enforcement agency type.
And many people have now determined that defund is the wrong word.
Yep.
What? I'm sorry.
Defunding is probably the inappropriate word.
Defund is probably the wrong word.
That's what I'm thinking, is inappropriate word.
Reparitize, restructure, evaluate, and as, as Chief Benz said, you know, there's talk, having mental health professionals, you know, assist, you have, he's like a crisis intervention team, but that includes someone such as that. You know, they get that training, what level of training do officers in departments should they have? And I think we have a, you know, you read what he's taught, what he's stated, and also what we know about, that they have a high level of training, can they have more? Certainly, and I suspect that's where we'll be going, is different levels of training, but also I think you'll see every time integration of other people, whether they're mental health professionals or not, working with police departments or working in the community to help, because mental health in North Carolina kind of got shoved to the side, and it went private, and it's not really, it's, and not just in North Carolina, nationwide, but mental health kind of got stuck to the side, oh, we'll let so-and-so deal with it, and then they're dealing with, with some private folks that are good, some private folks that are bad, and some people doing it just to make money, yeah, so it's a complex issue that just, you're just, defunding the police is not going to wave a wand. Again, I think many people not acknowledge that's the wrong words, is how, how you emphasize, how you do it, not just having police going out on some of these calls and some of these issues, because there are some issues, as they stated, that from a mental health standpoint, that they have some training, but there's some things that y'all just come up against sometime, you're like, what am I supposed to do?
Yeah, and sometimes at two o'clock in the morning, there's no one else to call, except the police. So they're going to dial nine one, whether it's the fire department or whoever they get, but, but that's the only resource available at that time of the morning, three o'clock in the morning, so.
Joe, would you be able to just, I mean, I don't want to rush it such that we're not doing it justice, but would you be able to sort of touch on what's made the media recently in a lot of places, the eight items that are out there that folks are talking about, and people are suggesting that police departments ought to look at those and decide how they would respond to those?
Sure. The memo that you have in front of you, the first one was a ban on chokeholds and strangulation, and I think the President Trump's executive order addressed that today, and I think the governor's orders are going to also address that at some point in the future with their task force they're setting up, but that basically just bans chokeholds and any kind of strangleholds that, that you can have. And, and my response to that is absolutely we would ban that, except in the use of deadly force. Our officers are trained, they're very well trained, and they're trained to know that those types of things are deadly force, use, use of deadly force. So that's a last resort option, but it could be the only resort option they have in a certain situation. So we don't want to ban it altogether, but we certainly added a piece to our policy that says this is prohibited unless deadly force is authorized, because at that point, deadly force is deadly force, whether it's a handgun, whether it's a stranglehold, whatever, at that point is, is kind of, there's nothing else left, except that. The second piece of that was the required de-escalation, and I think I alluded to my memo, the crisis intervention training that we go through, our officers are trained within the first three years of how to de-escalate mental health crisis that go on, so we're always looking to ways to, to mitigate those, those situations when they arise, so our officers receive a forty hours plus of training on that de-escalation techniques and those kinds of things. We also require that our officers do not put themselves in any jeopardy, so that basically means that we cannot create a deadly force encounter, specifically because of our actions, whether that's jumping in front of a car, or that's putting ourselves, from, right now I have between Mr. Baggett, a, a podium, so if Mr. Baggett had a knife or some other force, our policy says I can't step around here and create that deadly force. Right now I have a situation where I have a barrier, so that's what our policy says as well. We're also adding a piece to our policy that says, when safe, under the totality of the circumstances and time and circumstances permit, officers shall use de-escalation tactics in order to reduce the need for force. So we're actually adding that to our policy, just, we already, we already train on that, it's just we're adding it to the policy itself. Number three is require warnings before shootings. There's a lot of situations that occur where that's just not feasible, so we can't require that in every situation. We are trained every time to communicate directly with a person, if we, if we're doing anything and requiring a person to do anything, we're communicating, we're communicating loud, we're communicating clearly on what we need them to do. At those, at certain points, they, it's just not feasible to provide that warning. We walk up on a situation where somebody's using deadly force with somebody else, you're not going to stop and say, hey, please put your gun down, or put your knife down, stop stabbing that person, we're going to react. So anytime, if you put that in policy, that you require that, it really backs an officer in the corner where they legally justified in what they did, but they violated our policy, so we don't want to put them in that kind of position. And it talks in there, that memo as well, about the. And it talks in there, that memo as well, about the imminent use and what, where our imminent use or our use of force, deadly force comes from, state law. Talks about imminent. Those are the words the state legislature have used. And imminent means it's going to happen. It doesn't mean it may happen and it could happen. It means it's happening. So it's imminent use of, of other force. Next piece, the duty of other officers to intervene in cases of excessive force. That's something we put in policy years ago. And we've seen that actually occur several times where officers intervened in what they thought was, was force that was not warranted. And we, we took action on those, those items. But we have had that policy for years. I think it's a very good policy to have and holds everybody accountable. And our officers understand not only they're accountable to the department, but if they don't intervene in a situation that could potentially lead to charges, just like it did in Minneapolis where we saw where that, that officer was, was on his neck and the three officers stood around and watched. Ban on shooting at moving vehicles, that's also something we banned many years ago. We, we determined after, after some situations that occurred, not here locally, but, but throughout the country, where if, if you shoot somebody that's driving a vehicle, all of a sudden that person who's driving that vehicle is now incapacitated and they're driving a deadly weapon. So you don't know where that car is going to wind up. They don't have any control over it. You don't know who's going to get hurt. So we ban that unless it's a deadly force situation, potentially where the driver is coming directly at them. And again, they're not allowed to put themselves in that danger if they, if they can get out of it. So it's pretty much banned in our department. Require use of force continuum. I don't know if anybody's familiar with the use of force continuum, but usually it starts out with officer presence. So if I come to a scene and I happen to deal with something, my first, my first piece of, of force, if you want to call it that, on the scene is my presence of being there. And at that point, if, if I have to take corrective action or arrest or whatever, then I can elevate that to maybe hands-on where I go to the person. And then I might elevate it to my taser or I might elevate it to my baton and then finally to deadly force. The problem is that situations unfold very quickly. So I may have to start, I arrive on the scene, I can't work my way all the way up each continuum piece every time. I may have to start with my taser. I may have to start with deadly force, depending on the situation. So Officer Walker is with us today. He's our use of force instructor. And he teaches that you use whatever the force is necessary at the time based on the circumstances that you're dealing with. So we can't go up a continuum every time. So sometimes you have to arrive on scene and you have to go to deadly force. Sometimes you have to go to taser. Sometimes it's just hands-on. But either way, you can't always work yourself up that continuum like it's a, like it's a methodical process. Next piece of that is require officers to report each time they use force or threaten to use force. And we have done that for years. We have a great system, great internal affairs system. Anytime an officer uses force, and I put those pieces in there, what actually equates to use of force and when we have to report that, a supervisor must respond to the scene. A supervisor responds to the scene, evaluates what happened, they interview all the parties, the suspects you've arrested, the officers that were on scene. They get statements of what happened. They put all that together, they go back, they watch the video, because everybody officer now is equipped with a body worn camera. They watch all that, they put that together, they look at not just what happened there and what the officer did, but they look at all the situation. They look at, you know, is there things we could do better, but not necessarily against policy? They also find if a policy was broken, it has nothing to do with the situation they're investigating. They look at that. So it's looked at entirely. And then once that officer completes that report, it goes through every step in the chain of command. Every, the sergeant reviews it and the lieutenant reviews it, checks off on it, signs off on it. The captain reviews it, checks it, signs off on it. And the chief of police checks it, signs it and signs off on it. So that has got four or five different eyes before the, the situation is resolved. So all of our officers are required to submit a use of force report. Supervisor investigates it and then everybody in that chain of command reviews it and makes sure it was, it was legitimate and it was a, it was a good use of force.
Thank you, thank you, Chief Benz. Any sort of quick questions or comments, Counsel?
I got a comment if I could, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that report, Chief. You know, Scott pointed out, I don't even like to watch TV anymore just for the stuff that's going on. Some of these towns, I only mention names, I think the mayor's, not excluding you, sir, some of the mayors go off to deep end. Everybody's reacting to different things. And a term I've always used been up here is be proactive, you know, be prepared. And, and the last thing I want to do is come in and tell the police department how to do their job, you know? I don't want to be a cop. It's, it's tough enough being a fireman, I don't want to be a cop. Because in, in recruitment for policemen is going to be very hard the next few months just because the way so many of them are treated. And with the news media, they're trying to make every cop out to be a bad guy. I mean, when the mayor of a town fires an officer without even reviewing the video, you know, just automatically assuming they're guilty, that's, that's just not good business. And before you give that report, my recommendation is let our police department get together and come up with what they think. It sounds like you, you're already proactive on everything for the most part. And speaking for me, I'm never going to step up here and tell you how to do your business. I just want to equip you with everything you need to do your job. And I think we've got professionals on our police department. And, and I think they're doing a, a very effective job, looking at what's been going on and making the necessary changes and being proactive. So, you know, and I, you know, I got those emails like everybody else did. And I didn't, I just didn't want to comment, I'd just wait and see. And, and so Chief, you've answered my questions and I, I think we're, we're on top of it here in Garner. Is an ideal situation, I don't think policing ever is an ideal situation, I don't care where you at, because things happen. You know, I remember even on the fire department, you, you train and you train, but when it's three o'clock in the morning and it's pouring down rain and you run up on a situation, never know what you're going to run in on, and especially if it's an active shooter and you're out there by yourself, who am I to tell you what you should do? Wait a minute, I got to do this, this and this, and I got to tell him this? No, you got to react and do what you got to do because you want to go home to your families at night. But I know our police department's professional and they're going to do it a very effective job. And I think they will police each other if there's a problem. And that's, Mr. Mayor, that's the only comment I've got to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. All right. Since I gave Mr. Matthews an opportunity to comment, I'll...
I have some questions. Talking about the use of force, the chain of command and it being signed off on, are those reports ever audited or verified by an outside party for completeness or accuracy? Or is there another set of eyes external to the department?
There's not, and mostly because of state law. State law doesn't allow us to release that information because it involves personnel information. So it don't allow, does not allow us to do that. The final step after the chief of police is our internal affairs investigator. And on top of that, just to kind of expand on that a little bit, we have a system in, in place that, that captures if, if say an officer was involved in three uses of force in the last four months. I don't exactly what the rule, the rule setup is. They get an alert. Captain Smith reviews that alert. She looks at each individual case, sees if there's any similarities or any, any things that we need to be aware of. Is it a specific officer? What, what are the situations? Was it all verified? We go back and review all three of those cases to see if there's a link between them, to see if there's something wrong with the officer, to see if there's, maybe the officer's got some issues at home. It just looks at, looks at all those different things and really tries to, to pull in and see if there's a systemic issue with that specific person or if maybe these are all justifiable uses of force. And it's just a way to check ourselves if we get so many reports in such a short span of time.
Thank you. My other, you have some statistics on use of force for 2019. Twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven contacts with members of the community and fourteen, eleven hundred and forty arrests and only thirteen incidents of use of report and seventeen with injuries, seventeen use of force incidents, which to me sounds, doesn't sound like a lot. But one of the things, I'm a sort of a data person, and there are two sort of data things that would, I'd be interested in seeing. And that is, one, how does that compare to other municipalities in the county? And if we're above or below and why? There may be reporting differences, but I'd be very curious to see that. The other thing that I think, and that this kind of dovetails, I think, with the community liaison position. And that is, you say in your memo that that twenty-seven thousand number doesn't include the thousands of contacts from other activities such as pow, barbershop, rap session, coffee with a cop, et cetera. And I think need to capture that, as much of that information too, because I don't think that's information that gets counted when you're talking about engagement and having a way to measure that, to say X percentage of our officers spend this percentage of time doing this volunteer stuff. And if you can't measure it, you, you can't tell that story. So I think, and those are the two data things that sort of jump out at me, that make me really curious to how we stack up in different ways. One, again, back to data, it'd be interesting to see sort of a breakdown of our department in terms of years of experience, age, different demographics and ethnicity and all these things, to kind of see what our department is comprised of. How many years of experience our officers have? You know, that kind of stuff. On the other side, it'd be interesting and informative for people to know in the hiring process, and I guess you can answer this now, I don't want to, the law, make this too long, but I think it's really important, but sort of in the hiring process, what are you looking for? And what are sort of automatic red flags for someone not getting a job in this police department?
The red flags are so many. There, there's just a lot. I mean, there's, there's what have they done in their past, of course, the criminal history's the first thing. The psychological, we do have psychological in all our, all of our applicants who make it to a certain point, once they get past the interview stage. Some wash out. We had two wash out in the last six months on that. We look at their references and what the references say. We look at their education. We have just a plethora of different pieces to that. We're working right now, BD's not here, but working with the Sandbox. And it's, it's a group of, a group of municipalities working together to try identify better candidates for policing. And so we're working anytime we can do that. So there's just any number of things that disqualify candidate. It could be that, that you do an interview and they just don't interview very well. We do also do testing. So we have, we, we look at and make sure they have a minimum math and, and English grammar is what it looks at. There's two, there's standardized tests through the North Carolina Association Chiefs of Police, they're validated tests for law enforcement, because I think you have to have a ninth grade level, reading level before you can be a police officer. Twenty-one years of age, there's certain requirements there. But certainly those tests sometimes put people out. Then we also have our PO-PAT. So we require people to be able to pass the PO-PAT as a physical requirement. So there's, there's a lot of dynamics in that. We usually start with a pool of about 50 and we wind up doing interviews on anywhere from nine to 11. And after the interview process, we might get three to four potential applicants out of that. So it's, it's, it's a pretty stringent weed out process through that whole thing. And it takes about three months to do.
Dovetailing on that, included in some of the emails and in the media are, is a lot of backlash on school resource officers. And, you know, I was fortunate enough to take the Citizens Police Academy here last spring, which I think you all should continue to do, fructally. But can you speak to the role of school resource officer, officers in Garner and in the schools and how they're chosen and how they actually function here?
So we have a school resource, we have, we have two SROs at Garner Senior, two SROs at South Garner, then one at both our middle schools. And we've had that program in existence, I think around 1998, at least at the middle school level. I think Garner Senior started one in 93 or 92, it was Eric Copeland. So that, that role has somewhat changed, I think, over the, over the longevity of the time that it's been there. Our goal for that role is not only to be a, particularly in the middle schools, it's different. So, and it's also different depending on the principal and how involved the principal wants the SRO to be involved. Some, some principals don't want us to be involved in a lot. They don't, because that, I mean, it's, it's some politics involved, I'll be frank with that. So the more times something is reported, the more statistics they have, the more things, maybe their school doesn't look quite the same as they, they'd like it to look. We, we choose our SROs by the folks that want to work with kids. They want to be involved in, in counseling and mentoring and being in the classrooms and those kinds of things, really the things we strive for. The security piece of it is a given. I mean, they're going to be at school, they're there to protect the campus, they're to protect the, the students and staff. But the secondary role of that is besides taking reports if they have to, but is to be that mentor and to be, to be able to work with those kids and that youth. Some of our SROs participate in after-school pow programs. So we have pow programs in East Garner and North Garner and their after-school programs, they run those. Some of our SROs have been football coaches in the past, some of our SROs. So it really, we, we encourage them to be involved in every aspect of the campus that they can be involved in. It really just, again, it goes back to what do the staff want and what does the principal want and how involved they want the SRO to be. But that's, that's our goal, is, is to, to really be a mentor to those kids, to kind of help them figure out what's right and wrong, to be able to go and come to the SRO if there's an issue or concern they have and be able, help them be able to address that.
Yeah. I was going to say, let me get to a couple of other people if you have any others. Mr. Benz, do you have any questions for Mr. Benz?
He answered them all.
Oh, okay, good. Ms. Behringer? And I believe we already heard from you guys, right? Yeah, great. Okay, yeah, Mr. Dixon.
The last thing I'd like to mention is we do have a nationally accredited police force department through Kalia. And that doesn't make us perfect. It doesn't give us all the answers, but we believe that puts us a step ahead on our processing procedures because they get reviewed regularly. And we just went through our three-year review. And that's something we plan to continue to do.
Well stated, yeah.
I mentioned something else. You talked about a lot of emails that you're receiving. We received one the other day, I just thought was kind of relevant to what we're going through right now. And I'm just going to read it briefly, what it says. It says, "I'm feeling so frustrated right now. I love black lives dearly, but I love the police too. I'm so grieved that people think the only way to love the black community is to hate the police, but I don't know what to do. What can I do to support the police? What can I do to support the community? Thanks for all you do and all the great ways you do it." And our response to that is that you don't necessarily have to be, it doesn't have to be a binary decision. You don't have to hate the police to love the community. You don't have to love the community to hate the police. So there's a lot of things that I think that we're, we're really, and Rodney mentioned this a little bit, really trying to, to reach out and engage right now. A lot of groups, we're going to start our barbershop rap sessions back up this Saturday. We've talked to Vince and, and Brandon. And so on a very limited basis due to COVID, but we're going to get back in and they're, they're eager for us to get back in and answer some of the questions, just like y'all have. We've reached out to a lot of area churches and are opening that up. And I'm working with Rick, obviously, on a potential forum. I don't know what that's going to look like, but where people can either call in and answer, ask questions, just like y'all are doing now. And we can answer those and maybe build some engagement going on. So those are some of the things that we got working on.
And I would just comment that I, I know there, there have been two or three people, one's a minister, who's had some interest in trying to maybe start some conversation groups engaging the police department. And one was, I was going to ask you, they were even going to ask you about the possible use of your training room, but I'm not sure if that, but, but I think that'll continue. And when we have opportunity, Mr. Dixon and I have had a chance to sit down with, with a couple who have teenage kids and they had some questions. Can't always do that. But I think coming out of that was an interest, at least by the, the mother of that, to say, if you find other people who have similar concerns, put them in touch with me and we'll be happy to see what we can work out to, to, to grow the group and to further discussions and engage the community and/or the police in, in discussions in constructive ways. So I think we'll continue to hear some of those things. Some will probably materialize and, you know, we can carry forth with them. Others may or may not, we'll see. But we're open to that. open to that.
We're willing to engage anybody that wants to.
Chief Ben mentioned our, all officers have body cameras, and they have for the last two to three years. We have dash cams also, which we've had for years. We won the, we were the first ones to have dash cams in not only Wake County, but in the Triangle area. So all police cars are equipped with all this, the cameras and the information. We have a body camera policy in place. They're supposed to get to a call. They're supposed, the camera's supposed to go on, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so people need to know that, because...
They're linked, so that if your blue light's on, your body camera comes on, your in-car camera comes on. So there's a lot of triggers right now that automatically engage those things, so that officers don't have to always think about it. But, but yes, they're required to record any incident.
And Mr. Adelger talked about the number of cases to use of force and the number of contacts, twenty, about twenty-eight thousand contacts. But again, he's right, the other contacts through different programs, but just when they see you at the grocery store, the drugstore, wherever you may be, we're talking ten thousand or more than that in other contacts. You're talking forty thousand plus contacts, probably, maybe more than that. You talk about the number of arrests, eleven-hundred-and-forty, seventeen were use of force, which is one and a half percent. And he's right, you know, it would be interesting to see other statistics, because of what you've seen on TV now. Recently, the George Floyd, I mean, he was killed by the officer, and because the situation in Atlanta was not very good. But it's just a small minority. It's just like, you know, complaining about all the protesters and the ones who do the rioting and the looting, it's a small percentage of those, just like the bad cops. They're bad cops, they're bad elected officials, they're bad town officials, they're bad bankers, lawyers, doctors, et cetera. And, you know, lumping everyone into the same group and saying they're all bad is, is, you know, it's, like I said, the defund thing has kind of calmed down a little bit, and people are trying to, I think, restructure how they want to see it move forward. Somebody was comparing us to other countries, Switzerland and Norway. Well, Switzerland, Norway, don't let everybody have a gun. That's a whole, just not comparing apples to apples. Our rights here in this country where people can bear arms is different than a lot of other countries. And so that's, changes a lot of things. And even if you ban things like drugs, there are still drugs here. So it's, it's a trying time for police officers, and, you know, I hope in our budget we address some of those issues, give you all the tools. You know, you talked about in the middle of the night, y'all get a call and go somewhere. You don't know if it's a messy dispute, if somebody's got a weapon. You know, fire, they get the first response. Y'all go out there, somebody's at this time, people loud yelling, screaming, maybe. With COVID out there, y'all putting yourself right in the middle of it. And I think so far we've been pretty fortunate. Both you and fire have both been fortunate going out in those situations. People don't realize, all first responders in Garner and Raleigh and Wake County and North Carolina across the country are putting themselves out there some time in situations that are, there's a lot of danger. So thank you for what you do.
Joe, did, or did you already mention this? Did you want to put in a quick plug regarding the survey that is out there now, where I think you do it every year or whatever? We encourage, I mean...
We decided to re-advertise ourselves. We've been doing a survey, we do a yearly survey, and we've put it out, I think, like in May, middle of May. So we, yesterday or two days ago, we decided, hey, there's a lot going on right now. Let's put this thing back out there. Let's re-advertise it and see what we get. At that point, we had three hundred responses. We had three hundred responses in twenty-four hours. So we had a lot of people providing that positive. Overall, overwhelmingly, we've kind of looked through it. It's very, very positive for the most part, very supportive.
Okay. Well, and I just wanted to emphasize, a lot of times people have complaints and maybe, for whatever reason, they don't use the right forum, but this is an excellent way to express an opinion through a survey. You're anonymous, you don't ever put your name on it. So I encourage people to participate in that, for sure.
That will be up till June thirtieth.
Right, thank you. Okay, thank you, Joe. We appreciate that, sure enough. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
No, the only thing I would say, though, is, it is a trying time for black individuals in this country. You know, I would say that the issue is real, maybe not in this community, but it is real, and we do need to work, you know, my role, work with the police to make sure those type of things don't happen in this community. But there's a lot of fear and angst in the black community, especially with your younger folks that feel like police are the enemy. And we do have to talk to our children differently than some races have to talk to their kids with their interaction with police. So I don't want to minimize that at all. I just want to hear, in my role and the people that I know that police this community, work with them, so we have policies and procedures in place and repercussions for things that may not be in place in other, other communities.
If I could just expel on that, just, exactly right. We've had those discussions with some of our, internally with some of our employees, some African-American employees, and they'll tell you firsthand that Garner has, in this area, Wake County is very professional. Most of the agencies in Wake County are accredited. Most of the agencies have that professional, professional reputation. But you go outside Wake County, and it's a different story. I'm not, not saying that anybody's bad or anything else, that there's not racism in Wake County. I certainly don't say that either. What I say is that if you go outside of Wake County, people that feel comfortable where they at, where they live, may not feel as comfortable someplace else, because they don't know the police, and they also don't know what the police are about somewhere else. So it's standards, and I think that what we're going to see in the nation is more of a reformation of standards and across-the-board standards, and I think that's a good thing for policing.
I'm sure we'd all agree, yeah, we're at a good level. We won't rest on our laurels.
No, absolutely not, absolutely not.
We'll keep working. And I would say, just in this context, I appreciate the town manager's, some opportunities he and I have had to interchange and discuss and to discuss with other people. He's been very, very open and given me some insight that has been helpful to me. So thank you, sir. Okay, if that's all you have, I'm going to go to council reports, and I'll start down to my left, Mr. Matthews. Anything?
Good to go.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Singleton?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. One is they're still delivering meals on wheels. I delivered meals today. So they're still delivering that. They did have, they found out today, they had a food runner. Someone tested positive, so they're going to have to skip next week. Food today was delivered by a different vendor. So that's unfortunate that's happened, but they're trying to be cautious and safe. Also want to mention, last Tuesday on the ninth, at the Garner Magna High School, class of twenty-twenty had their graduation ceremony. I think there were roughly six-hundred-and-seventy kids, oh, excuse me, teenagers in that class, and I think six-hundred-and-twenty went through the process. I'm sure, being one of them, it was well done. Dedicated staff, but stood up there and stand up there all day because it was a long process.
Sure it was.
We heard about traffic being out on Seventy, and we waited to the end. We were in the final ten. Actually, about the final six or seven, because of how long the lines were. But it was, it was a wonderful effort by the staff at Garner High School to, and the PTA to recognize the students. And just wanted to mention that for the class of twenty-twenty. Very challenging for not only the Garner's class, but all the high school and college, universities, community colleges who graduated. So it's a different environment. But anyway, just wanted to mention to remember the class of twenty-twenty.
We'll start it back, what I call hot meals where they deliver.
No, sir, still the cold meals.
I'd done the other, and I didn't think it'd start.
Yes, they, yeah, not yet.
Ms. Behringer, I'll go last. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things. I attended virtually the League of Municipalities Conference today. It's a three-day conference, but today's version, City Vision is the title. And I heard Dr. Michael Walton, Walton from NC State, reflect on the economy, and it was more optimistic than I had anticipated. It wasn't optimistic, but it was more optimistic than I anticipated. And he, he shared some real numbers in comparison to situations in the years past. And so his overall take on it was, of course, that recovery is going to happen. It's going to be slow, but it was a much more, as I said, optimistic viewpoint than what we're hearing in the news media and what we hear when we're in conversation with people one-on-one. And the second thing is that I have had three different people in my neighborhood, I would say the past three weeks, none this week, but last week too and one the week before, call me and tell me they'd heard shots fired in the neighborhood. And one said that the rumor was that the shot they heard on Sunday afternoon was someone trying to shoot a raccoon in a tree. And so I just wondered if the, Lori, have you all heard anything about that or gotten any, any complaints?
If any, Ms. Behringer, we'll look at.
I can tell you some more. Well, one of the individuals that called me said, please don't use my name. Those, the one that person was talking about was in the daytime, I believe, on Sunday afternoon and Monday or Tuesday afternoon. Two others, and I heard those shots around eleven o'clock at night. And it was, it was pretty clear that it was gunshots. So that's all I have, sir.
We did respond to Center Street regarding some issues down there with potentially a dog being shot and injured. So I had the supervisor go out immediately once we were notified, and then animal control followed up with that, so.
The second two people that called was not in relation to that, but it was after that happened.
Other than that, I'm not aware of anything else.
Thank you. Ms. Singleton?
Pass those down. This is, speaking to Mr. Singleton's mention of COVID issues, it's a two.
Catch.
I'll give you the copy, too, Rodney.
Okay, there you go. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to bring, again, to the fore, the issue of COVID-19. I know Raleigh voted just tonight to make face masks mandatory, which we may address at some point, but not tonight. The data presented to you is data I've been tracking for the past, since early May. The first one you see is compares North Carolina, Wake County, Mecklenburg-Jonston, Garner, two-seven-five-two-nine, Raleigh-Garner, two-seven-six-zero-three, and then Raleigh, two-seven-six-one-zero, and then Clayton. And each bar under each of those is a weekly increase in cases. And what you see for Garner is a very rapid and consistent increase versus some of the larger counties and other municipalities. If you go down to the second chart, it just compares the ZIP codes surrounding us. You have Garner's, it's jumped forty-nine percent in the past week for reported cases, and it's more than doubled in two weeks, from seventy-one to one-forty-nine. The faster increase than anywhere else around us, but as you can see north of us in two-seven-six-one-zero, the cases continue to rise there. The last two charts sort of show relative proportion of cases versus population within the ZIP codes and municipalities. And then the last one is increase since May third. So there's been a five-hundred-and-forty-eight percent increase in cases in Garner. I just bring that to our attention, because I think we need to continue to be vigilant. And whereas we're here tonight in person on a decision that was made two weeks ago with different data, you know, it seemed like, that seemed a reasonable thing to do. But as we continue to watch these numbers, oh, the last sheet that's separate, I printed this off from today, and that's the number of hospitalizations. And that number continues to rise, and it's at its highest level. So a combination of the rise in this data leads to the hospitalizations later in this data. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of council and the community to, we're not out of the woods on this thing by a long shot. And everyone should take precautions, particularly if you're vulnerable. But we're, it's, it's here in a way that it hasn't been here in Garner before. We have reported now our second death. We had one, two, three weeks ago, and there's been another. I think we kind of dodged the first pass of this as it went through. But it's increasing in our community at a faster rate than some others. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of everyone and continue to put out the right messages that are appropriate for the situation, and let's also evaluate what we want to do with regards to monitoring the numbers and holding meetings and those sorts of things, so.
Do you mind sharing, or maybe you did upfront, most people want to know, you know, where you get your data from, where the information comes from?
Yeah, so all of this data is directly from the Department of Health and Human Services data. And so when they started publishing ZIP code level data, I started looking at it on a weekly basis and compiling it. Daily is too volatile and not really that informative. But when you start looking at it a weekly basis, you really can see these trends. You'll see that dip in each of those. The first page, that was Memorial Day weekend, so there was a little bit of gap in reporting and testing. So there is a little bit of a lag, which accounts for a little bit of the higher jump the week after. But there's definitely a trend over the past two weeks of accelerating confirmed cases in Garner. So I just bring that to everyone's attention, to pay attention to that stuff. And the other thing is, the mayor, you signed a letter with a bunch of other mayors around the George Floyd thing. I think it'd be good to put that on the website somewhere, release. I don't know if we released that as part of something, but it was a really powerful statement by several hundred mayors statewide.
Well, yeah, it was initiated, I don't know if it was initiated by what was called the metro mayors, but the Wake County mayor's learned about it, I think, through the mayor over in Durham. And then, and then it got circulated really across the state. And I forgotten how many mayors signed on. Certainly I did, because I thought it represented some of the concerns that many of us had, and certainly I had. And so, yeah, I have, I have a copy of it here. I can share it with council, and we could, I know I've had at least a person or two to say, well, you know, you guys taking a, making a statement, and you're going to put it on your website. If this council is interested in doing that, I can certainly do it. It wasn't authored by me, but it speaks basically to the concerning issues that many had. And I could, I could pass it around to this group, and you could email me if, I guess, if you think that it's something that we ought to consider putting on our website. That'd be right? Or I'll make copies and we'll send it out. Would that be right, Ms. Gibson? I can attach you to an email and send it out. Okay, I'll do that. Okay. All right. Mr. Vance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would say, this has been a challenging year to staff. Great job in pulling together the information to put together the budget, which I believe is a strong budget for this year, and for the council coming together around that budget to fund the necessary needs of the, of the town. And in conversations with one officer, I found out something in reference to what was going on downtown Raleigh with some of the rioting down there and, and how they were able to detour some activities, negative activities from happening here. There are things that happen with the police force that we never know about. And I want to say thank you for your service, and it's appreciated. There are, well, as Councilman Singleton says, there are bad apples everywhere, but it doesn't represent everyone, and we appreciate the service that you render. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me just mention, we already talked about the police survey. For all of you here and for the people who are listening out there, the annual Stevens Award nominations are now open. Committee that I serve on met, and so Ms. Gibson and her cohort are receiving those nominations. They're open until...
July seventeenth.
July seventeenth, okay, and a nomination form's available. So if you know of persons that you would consider nominating and/or spread the word to other people who might be interested, that's an annual award that's prestigious. We mentioned tonight that Ms. Phillips had been one of the recipients some several years ago. So be aware of that if you will. And with that, I believe that's all I have at this point. So if there are any other business to come before this council, it's ten PM in the evening. I suspect now would probably be a good time to adjourn. Staff, you have anything? I don't want to leave you. Okay, you're ready to go, too, right? Okay. With that, I will declare us adjourned for the evening. Thank you. Yeah. Next.